Mr. McHale?
Here.
Mr. Gambian?
Here.
Mr. Madison?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Entehar? Here. Mrs. Vittar, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
By the way, this is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the TCD staff, to the culinary students, to all of the staff who's here tonight. Thank you for the tour, the meal. It was very, very impressive. And I'm so happy to say that we have 180 students enrolled in your classes. And I think you're doing a great job educating them, and I'm sure my fellow board members as well as our staff in District 200 will agree. So, thank you again. We're very happy to be here. And I'll continue on with your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we need a motion to suspend the rules to go into workshop session. Your second, Mrs. Swanson?
Second.
Second, Mr. Roman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in workshop setting.
Way up front.
Great, Dr. Harris. I brought my laptop tonight to... I have a scrap in my bag, a cot in the wheel of the chair. We need somebody from TCD to reverse engineer this.
Not me, though.
Thank you, Mrs. Entehar, meeting board members, and thank you all for coming early this evening. As Mrs. Entehar said, I think you see the value of taking the opportunity to have our communal home meeting here this evening at one of our schools, the Technology Center of the Page. And it obviously was a very fitting introduction to what we're going to hear more about here this evening about the entire technology strategies and efforts that's going on across our district. Before I turn it over to Rod, I just want to comment briefly that, as board members know, this continues to be a very important topic that is all-inclusive. A lot in his department certainly are the keepers of the stuff and manage the equipment and the softwares and so on, a very, very important department. However, there is not a staff member across the district, including those at this table, that don't have a vested interest in what, you know, where we head with this, what it means to the entire learning environment in our school. So, with that perspective, please, you know, as we go through this and have this discussion tonight and look at some opportunities, I believe, that are in front of us in the very near future, think about, you know, the entire district impact. And I'm going to turn it over to Rod and let him walk through the presentation. And we're going to talk a little bit about where we are in very important areas. Rod?
It's that joke no one else gets. Takes a little time. Thanks, Dr. Harris, board members. Again, I've never changed the title, so it's going to be Tech Update. Can't get that creative, I guess. We did this again last April. Every year, we get to do an update of where we're at technology-wise. It's three things we're going to cover. One, the goals that we have in place, reliability, stability. We're really going to spend a lot of time looking at digital age learning, what does it mean for us to see UST 200, then talk about some targets that we have outlined for the next three years. If you do remember previously, when I first presented a plan three years ago, it was a fiber plan. If we look at where we were at the end of year three, technology's changed so much, we're going to try to focus about a plan every three years so that we're staying on top of the changing technologies. You know, who would have thought we'd ever even think of one-on-one? iPads were just a thing of, you know, just coming out when we first did the plan. So, things have changed. The goals these things meet, increase student learning for the master 21st century skills. We have the more goals, superintendent goals, and again, the milestone goals tied in with the superintendent's plan. We have the key to success. Where does the technology sit with this? We have integrated technology on the one end, but I think we can all see that technology touches little parts of all of this. I mean, we can talk about, you know, cyberbullying for a safe environment. It doesn't always, you know, have to be a walls-and-mortar safe environment. Effective instruction, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about how technology can help us become better instructors, reaching the teachers better or the students better. Communication, relationships, staff development, just about everything. Balanced budget, I'm not sure where tech fits with a balanced budget, but we're going to... We'll get there. Reliability, we'll start again with looking over a few of the things that were shared during the board report of February, where I gave the updates for the milestones we've added the last two months and can finally talk about it. The last one was just a board report that you read. In February, we were at 10% down. We're now at 12% down on average. Again, that average is during a typical month. I always take out August and September. To us, those aren't typical months. Those are, you know, beginning of the year. Sometimes things just aren't plugged in. I mean, they just, you know, sometimes it just takes a while to get to 900 something classrooms and make sure everything after it's been moved and cleaned is back on. The majority of these tickets, again, if you remember from the previous, were printers. Were printers and software support. That's 19 and 21%. I don't have that figure up here. It was in the written report. Only 10% of this classroom equipment, stuff that probably really affects instruction, is being down when we talk about those numbers, or desktop and laptop support. So, again, the gamut has changed from the first year of technology when we were recording a lot of the tickets. A lot of it was classroom, desktops, laptops, things like that. Things have changed over the years to a different type of ticket. The tickets are kind of the same. If you also remember, a large portion of the last time, I think Mr. Paulson even asked, was username and password really that high? Yes, that's a lot of just resetting, things like that. And we still do that quite a bit. We're trying to get to a stable environment where everyone's username and password is the same in everything, so hopefully we don't have those things happen. But it'll still take time for us to get, communicate back to the person that those things have been changed. The average open time per ticket, this has dropped drastically. We're at about 33.4 for open time. Again, it's in a 24-hour clock. You see it has kind of stabilized. I mean, I would say, it says 33.4, but I kind of tell my team, you know, we're shooting for 30 hours right now. Like I said in the written report, that's probably not going to change without an increase in staff or something. We've kind of hit that plateau to where just the amount of tickets that come in and the amount of staff we have, that's about where we sit. 30 hours is a pretty good thing when you're talking a 24-hour clock, that sometime, hopefully the next day. Of course, some do go longer if they're more involved. I hate to say it, some only take a minute sometimes, you know, and those work in our favor. But we've changed drastically from a 53-hour, was probably more than that in the first year or two until we added some staff. We sent out a survey, and I had little parts of this in the written report also. This was sent out to staff in October. We had 547 people respond to this. Sent out to about, you know, 1,300 staff members. That's, you know, almost 50%, close to 50%. That's not a bad return on it. We did ask them of various types of questions over some of them, but these are the ones that we picked out right away. 70% of the users only enter one or two tickets a year. So, a lot of times that could be at the beginning of the year, or they're actually having an issue or something is down. It's not like we have a repetitive. 25% said they add one to a month. We did look those over, and a lot of those are LLC directors or appoint person in the district, a secretary who puts in tickets for other people. So, we... A lot of the people do use the help desk, and it's not one person that has 90 problems. It's not repetitive. It really is used well in their day so that they can get their one issue taken care of. The biggest barrier, and we'd asked what things were hindering them at that time, was the internet speed. We were still waiting for the increase from AT&amp;T that we had signed in March 2013. That did happen since then, and we now, we went from 200 to a gigabit of internet. We, right now, average slightly under 400 meg, so we're not peaking. If we take out the USA/Canada hockey game day, that was the only day we... I didn't get the word out quick enough, not to watch that. But it was, we got close to the one gig. Some other questions that came out of that, 75% of people believed it adequate in working order equipment. That question was phrased so that, is it working most of the time? 75% yes, I have stuff that works. 34% said that they needed more stuff to do their duties. A lot of that we saw in the comments was, you know, why don't I have laptops yet? Why didn't we hand in certain things out? You're referencing other school districts in the comments that, you know, they've had projectors in every classroom, they've had document cameras in every classroom. So, just to put those in a frame of mind, there's 30... And what's a really funny number is, we actually have 30% of our classrooms that don't have projectors. So, that number is very correlated to what we see. 59% are handled in a timely fashion. I could have said that the other way. 41% don't think it's handled in a timely fashion. And 22% would like more communication from technology, and that's actually in the ticket system itself. So, we have made some changes addressed to that. That question referenced, are they communicated after they've entered in a ticket? And a lot of people felt that no, they're not. 20, you know, one out of every five saying, I don't even know when my ticket's closed. That was a problem for us, so we did some changes in our practice. Another set of questions in that survey were staff perceptions on the major changes that have happened in the past three years. And you can see just about everything that's been improved at the bottom, from desktop computers at every level to laptops, wireless phones, network, email, Active Directory follow-up. Those were the big things that we made major system changes. And one, that's a lot of major system changes for a district to handle. We did that. The blue, they said, had improved technology. The red, little difference, and for a lot of people, changing, you know, from Novell to Active Directory was better for us. To them, it was just a username and a password to turn on a computer. So, they don't see the benefits in that, but they're not saying it made it worse. The green area, they're saying made technology worse. The one that really jumps out is the phone system. And in the notes on that one or in the comments on that, it really came from the schools. There were three elementaries in one middle that did have phones in every classroom before we put VoIP system out everywhere for phones in every classroom. It changed their calling pattern a little bit, because no one could direct dial them anymore. And that was a little frustrating to have to go through a major system now. You know, before, we had, we eliminated 400 phone lines by going to the VoIP that not everybody had a seven-digit direct dial. So, it was really not the system itself, it was more that change of, here's my phone number calling. Now, they have to, here's the phone number, press five, either search my name or here's my four-digit extension. They didn't like that kind of change. Because of that survey, these were the major changes we did, and I highlighted these in the written report that went out in February. We started tracking the first response time. We thought that would one help for communication, but it also gives us a measure of making sure we can tell people we're reading every ticket. Sometimes, it's hard to understand what someone says in the ticket. We get, it's broken sometimes in the ticket, but it doesn't tell us what it is, and it's under the category of other, so we're not sure what's broken. But this allows us to actually follow up. Changing that person from a support manager to read that and help them, managing the texts throughout the day, where they go and how they manage their schedules, really allowed us to focus on the crucial ones. I think I said this before. We're able to then take a ticket that, a projector goes down in a high school classroom. It might affect 180 students that day. We have a priority. Not that an elementary projector is not as important, but it's only affecting that one classroom if they don't rotate classes. So, an issue as an example, we're able to read the tickets, address them, and then be able to look at and say, which ones are our priorities? And someone is there, able to route somebody. We can read it, and if we don't understand it, they follow up. Not sure I understand. Are you saying this is completely down, or is this just jammed? What was the problem with it? We also scheduled weekend maintenance windows. That allowed us to set a schedule for server updates to let people know this weekend's systems might be on and off, on and off. We've actually only had to use three of them where we've turned things down and up. But I think the schools appreciated that, that we were able to say, this is the weekend. It was no longer like on a Thursday, and we really need to shut it down this weekend for a critical update we have. We were able to keep up and have things scheduled. We also added some better systems for remote support. Again, that's something that came with our help desk that didn't get fully active until we had a better network and things in place, allow us to remote into people's computers. Sometimes it freaks them out and they hit the power button because they're not sure who's moving their mouse, but it's, then we have to drive there and fix it. But it's, everyone gets used to it after a while. We now have a little note that says someone's working on their computer. So, those were some of the changes that we made, based on the statistics from that, you know, more of the qualitative data of asking staff, what changes are you looking for in technology? A few things more than we put into reliability. This is a network monitoring software that we use. It's called PRTG. It's not important, but that's how I reference it. And I have a funny story to tell because this is a screenshot from their website because ours have always been green. And it wouldn't mean anything to show what it looks like when something's down. We had the internet turn off for nine minutes today. Our firewall froze, so we actually, I could have actually taken a screenshot of our red line. But like, for ours, this turned red. The rest of us stayed green, which showed us there was something wrong. The firewall got hung on something. We just had to restart it, and it was good. First outage we've had in as long as I can remember, but nine minutes means a lot. But this actually connects to every single switch in every closet across the district. So, we can now make sure connections and things are up on the computers in the classrooms, that things aren't off. Before that was, we had to wait for someone to call us, hey, I don't have a connection. We'd have to troubleshoot, where did it cut? Was it cut at the MDF? Is it down at, you know, the main computer, the closet? So, we're able to now snap into every little tiny piece of every server. We can tell if they're running too hot, too cold, if they're running out of memory, all the time, which is really nice. The guys that have this installed on their computer, when there is a blip in the system, their whole screen goes red. You can't look away from it. It's not something they can ignore. And they even have to be on the website to show it. So, we actually got to see it work this morning for nine minutes. There's also another with the hard leak out there. We also use Nessus, just so you're aware. I didn't want to share this. We have a security vulnerability assessment tool. This is also not a screenshot from our computers, because we don't have many reds. The reds are things that we probably have to address. And what it does is, it actually checks the vulnerabilities, not over the servers, but in every computer out there. So, if we're ever trying to do updates and people are shutting the machine down during updates and stuff like that, it actually goes out and says you do have some machines out there that have a vulnerability hole in it. So, we can make sure that all of our stuff is safe and secure at all times. So, it really just tests vulnerability on all the systems and services that we have out there. We run this about once a week and get a report every Friday to just make sure it's all up to date. A lot of those things are just, you get those Windows updates where they say, one is critical, three are mediums. Those are the kind of things that show up. You haven't installed all of the Windows updates. You haven't done those types of things. The thing I know right, a draft we're all familiar with, if you said every year, I guess I had to change it now because we're changing the plan a little bit. In 2015, it's actually around the block, so I can't really use this one anymore. But to date, when we talk about reliability services, you know, reliability support, we feel this is one of our best years we've had. We've had very, you know, targeted goals to get in there. We've put the right systems in place. We've changed some of our internal practices to get there, and we've seen the benefit. I think, we all know, last year, I was still under the dip, and we all heard about it a few times. And we were above that dip now, and I think this year's been a very, very different year for us. One of the big things we're doing now is we are working to support the digital learning environment for students and staff. It's nice to not have to worry about all the broken things where we can start to think about where we're going next. Are we ready for, you know, huge digital infusion? Are we ready for BYOD? What are we ready for? What changes do we need to make where we can start to focus on what's going to happen in the classrooms? Again, we made it out of the dip. And then, the nice thing we're doing is opportunity to enhance technology is now. We're at this turning point. I kind of look at it as, we've done all the stuff we've done to get ourselves to a very stable environment. One thing from the community engagement was everyone saying, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. And I think that means different things to different people. I might have taken a little personally because I think we have an unbelievable infrastructure. It might not be built for one-on-one because we didn't build it for one-on-one, and I think that might be a little bit. But when we talk about what we have out there and the systems and the things that we have in place, we have a very robust network. There might need to be some planned changes if we plan to change what we had done three years ago. But to build upon it, we have a great piece of, you know, a great foundation to build upon. Any questions on that part? Maybe it's easier to do it that way instead of going into the next section? Anything? Yeah, it's the second time we've seen some of that. The next part is digital age learning. We're going to talk a little bit about what technology does with, you know, working with curriculum. How, what is digital age learning? What is this new environment going to look like? I am going to read this. "A transformation which involves systemic change and requires multiple levels of leadership commitment to be successful, including the coordinated support of technology, pedagogy, curriculum, and professional development." Just like Dr. Harris said, it involves everybody. We can support the technology, but we need to make sure that there's a pedagogy change happening in the classroom, happening with the students and with the teachers. We need to make sure that the curriculum is there, the new common core standards, and that everyone's aware of what those are so that they can learn in this digital environment. And professional development can't be said enough, that the districts that are making major changes, they're very, very front-loaded with professional development. It's not an afterthought. It's not something we're going to take care of over time as this happens. It's something that's done a lot in the front end. And I think, reading those things, we'll be ready for, you know, digital age. We can get all four of those pieces to work well together. For digital age learning, the change must, it has to, increase student learning and engagement. That's the given. It's not just about devices in people's hands. Even if we're not talking one-on-one, it's not just about adding 10 iPads in every classroom for people to have this access. It has to make the difference to how they're learning at the same time. It's not just, here's this, it's great, let's use it. It has to be, you know, woven into the curriculum. The teacher needs to be using it in the right way so that the students are learning from using it. One of the big things we have to take into account is human capacity for change. We saw on the first slide, we've changed eight major systems that most districts don't do in three short years. Whatever we do now is a major change in a lot of how teachers teach, how students learn. It's not just about, we already have those who are afraid of technology or leery of technology changes. Now, we're asking them to change the way they can teach so that the technology works with them. And it's, it can be a lot for an organization, so that professional development is key. The robust and reliable infrastructure, again, I do believe we have that. I think we have to build upon that, though. I think the foundation is there. We just need to build upon it, depending on whatever plans we use to move forward. And then, one of the biggest, we have to be fiscally responsible and sustainable. This has to be something that we can look at, whatever plan we use to move forward, that we have funds for years and years. We can't start something and then, three years down the line, say, sorry, we've got to make cutbacks here. It's got to be cut there. This is the one that, once it starts, it has to be sustainable from now and forever moving forward. So, where are we headed? Well, we've talked about Google Apps for Education. You guys all had a nice training with Ms. Dolphus and Ms. Cook on. We kind of dabbled a little bit. We got you your Google accounts. It's the same thing we're doing with the teachers right now, is introducing Google to them. We have a FIT committee that Faith and I are co-chairing that's termed Future of Integration Technology. We kind of think that really, really changed. It's really about what effective instruction is in this changing environment, I think. Trying to build a plan that teachers can look to, that they can reference and will help them and guide them to become, you know, educators that can meet kids digitally, that can, you know, foster these changing environments and really push our students and our staff further. We have one more meeting in the day. Probably going to have a couple more. It really is a great committee. It's a... But we're at the beginning of this planning, as to what this will look like. Part of the planning also, as you see the next one, is one-to-one device strategy. The FIT group is really looking at, what does good instruction look like tomorrow and today as well? What's it look like now in elementary classrooms that only have one computer and a shared laptop parts that they can use? We still need to plan for that. We don't know what's coming next. So, we're trying to make it irregardless of what's there and what's available to students, but how do we affect what's going on, how do we affect what the teachers are doing in the classroom now, again, whether we get to the next step or not? After that, we will look at a one-on-one device strategy. It's happening all over. Large unit districts are now starting to do this. What does it look like in a week? And I can't tell you that right now what it looks like. It is just part of the next step as to, what does that look like? If it's not that, what is the next step? Is it 10 devices in a room? We need to come up with a strategy to get things there. Seeking community feedback. And we've done that already in the community engagement. How do we apply that? What's the next step after the FIT committee and maybe next fall? How do we go back and take the information we got at the community engagement and seek the next input? Do we do a committee group on this? I'm not sure what that is, but we have to consider that. And then, again, make sure we have those infrastructure upgrades. Now, we use the word upgrades instead of, to add to those. Again, if it is more devices, we will need more access points. It's, that's a, you know, that's a given, but having a plan in place that it's not, we get them all in the room and the kids are sitting there and they're all trying to access one access point that's not the group that they want. What's the bandwidth look like to make sure that we have enough bandwidth as well? Again, right now, we're fine on bandwidth, but when we add 1,000 devices, then it'll start using a lot more bandwidth. So, this brings me to Google Apps for Education, and it's time for me to get a drink of water. Video's going to start when I hit the next one. I got water. This is a video. It's called "Google Apps," or "Why Google Apps in Five Minutes." It's from the perspective of a principal and a couple principals and a tech person. I really like it. Just like me, this tech guy talks fast, splits five minutes. I'll make sure it's loud enough here, but it is a very great video, and I can share the link with this when I'm done, too.
Google Apps for Education is a suite of web-based or cloud applications that work together seamlessly. Because they're in the cloud, you can access all your stuff anytime, anywhere. And because Google utilizes something called software as a service, it'll all my work through the browser on my computer, and I can communicate and collaborate with others on the same documents at the same time. This also means that I don't have to email copy after copy after copy of a document to everyone else that needs to see it, and then we end up with so many copies that we don't even know which one has been new on it. In the meantime, we've taken up all kinds of space on all kinds of machines and flash drives. One document, always the newest version. Google helps schools run a peak efficiency while giving schools the best, newest tools all the time. Your school gets domain emails that help convey professionalism to visitors and parents, and we can use a really awesome email system with more space than we could possibly ever use instead of settling for a terrible email solution that came with forever website package. I don't have to host or manage the email onsite because Google does that for me using the same security they use for themselves. Now, there are times I only want other people to see my stuff but not be able to change anything. Google gives us that option as well. This little button shifts the paradigm of how we work together. It's an amazing little button. Amazing. Okay, enough about the button. Within Documents and Other Productivity Tools, I get to decide if you view it, if you change it. Oh, yeah, we don't have to worry about pushing that little disk in the upper left-hand corner every 10 minutes because we're worried about the blue screen and death because Google saves everything every couple seconds. And they save every change ever made on the document in case I want to go back and revert to any of those old changes. Let's talk about the text side for a little bit. There's no need to install anything on any computers because that's always happening behind the scenes in the cloud. So, my computers can have any operating system and using virtually any browser, and Google's going to work. It's just going to work. And I don't have to manage and keep up lots of servers and lots of other systems that take lots of time from a teacher or a tech person that I want doing something else. With Apps Mail, everyone gets to utilize a really efficient way of handling emails called Conversation View, and we can keep anything that might have any importance in the future through this amazing little archive button because we have space galore. We can instantly search through all of our old emails by keyword milliseconds. In Google Drive, which is like my giant storage thing, but also my online productivity suite, I'm always welcome to upload any of my old files since many of us have lived in a non-Google world for too long. I can convert those files to Google format, and I can have an unlimited number of Google format files, not to mention five gigabytes of non-Google files. But how do we use Drive to collaborate? Well, within Documents, there are so many ways to work together. It's just plain ridiculous. I can chat on the side. I can see other people working right in the document while I'm working on it. I can comment on things to collaborate asynchronously. I can revert to any previous version if someone completely messes it up, and I can always quickly email all my collaborators within seconds. What about security? Don't worry. Google doesn't own the information. You do. They won't share with anyone unless you tell them to or they're required to. They'll store your info forever so you don't have to worry about losing it and delete everything if you ask them to. You can take it anywhere by downloading everything. I think you get the point. There's no need to worry. What about ads? And so, that's how Google makes lots of its money. Well, it's true, Google makes a lot of money from advertising, but within Google Apps, you can turn them all off. Pretty sweet. Enough talking about this stuff. Let's get to some actual examples. I can share a count of faculty documents like Faculty Minutes, or Team, or Curriculum Work that are instantly searchable by keyword for anyone in the faculty. We need to plan a big party day for the whole school. Well, that used to be a giant email thread going all around, hoping everyone remembered to hit their plan. All! Instead, let's just create a doc where everyone jumps on. Instead, let's just create a doc where everyone jumps on and adds their selections, their input. We can have common attendance documents for the whole school, we can share common schedules, common rooms, which change throughout the year, and we can all have access to the newest one instead of printing a new copy for everyone every time it changes. We can easily create surveys for students and parents, and Google instantly organizes the information into graphs without me having to do a thing. No highlighting the correct series and choosing appropriate graphs and labels, it's just there. I can have students blogging about topics internally, completely locked down to the public, we can share calendars throughout the organization to save one person a ton of busywork. I can create templates for my students to work from, you know, it's kind of like a worksheet but less photocopying and printing. Students can create websites, and teachers can create websites, and everyone can create websites, and share and collaborate and learn and have fun and learn. That was a lot of examples, but you probably get it. This is an amazing, free, secure, web-based set of communication and collaboration tools. It's awesome. It's Google Apps for Education.
Nobody fell asleep? Okay, good. Okay, so if we look at Google, we started using Google and turned it on and sent out logins for everybody on November 13th. Remember the date, because it was like a date that we picked in August, and it was always, I had to have it done by that day. We got it done by November 13th. This was not mandatory. This was an email out to the staff that said, hey, we created a Google account for you, if you'd like it. Since then, we've had, sixty-two and twenty-one, I can do the math, it's eighty-three. Eighty-three percent have logged on to Google. We'll find those other seventeen. But again, this is not mandatory to anybody yet. We had that many people log on because they wanted to. But the real statistic is, we can pull this every day, and in the last five days, sixty-two percent are still logging on every couple days. Why is that significant? I couldn't make the email joke, but it's, the big thing is this is organically grown. Again, we didn't push this. We didn't say everybody has to log in. We sent out an email and said, if you like it, here it is. We're getting cold with this, we're not pushing this on people, they're asking for more. We've added like six or seven different student pilots now, students have accounts with different teachers who want to use this collaboratively with their students. This year, we focused it at the leadership level. We had a November 20th meeting where we introduced it to the principals and gave them some examples from their peers. Joanne helped with the Special Ed Department, they've been using the product for two or three years now. We had Rachel and Brian Butt, they actually got up and shared how they use it with their staff. So we're trying to let the principals see that they can start to use it to share information with their teachers and see how valuable it is. We also had a follow-up on them in March, we had a couple new principals come in and demonstrate what they've been doing. Since that time, I pulled this last week sometime, we've had one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-eight, it's probably changed, documents in the system. That's from November until now. Of those, twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine, actually someone had to click the button that says "Create a New Document." That's not just people dragging and dropping Word, that's actually create new documents. One hundred and sixty-four thousand does include other things, people just using Google Drive to store stuff. The other big thing we have over here is the number of docs shared in, where it says "Number of Docs Shared" in in red, that's in district. So within the CUST200 domain in Google, there's sixteen thousand, or almost ten percent of those docs have been shared. Imagine if that was email and everyone just wanted to start emailing the Word docs they'd created back and forth. Email servers would be huge. The system had, you know, Google has probably caught on a lot faster than we thought it would, but it has been an amazing, you know, amazing journey. And then Brian, you should put it, it's free. I tried to make it flash, it wouldn't work.
It's free.
It's very built to see it's free. I got a light right two, right there. So moving forward, what are we doing with Google? Again, this, you know, this, what Google really is, is the environment to where we meet, where do we store, where can anytime, anywhere, learning happen. For us right now, we're, you know, using Google to do that. We have something we're calling School Days, which will be June 12th. We're doing it in Wheaton North, it's gonna be a half-day professional development, and it's not something we're, it's just, we're gonna tell them we're here, we're gonna do Google training. There's a committee of about four or five of us that are really working on trying to, you know, hype this up so that people come and who haven't either dabbled or want to learn some of the more advanced things in Google can come, yes.
Can board members come?
Sure, we'll let you go. Yes, of course. There will be sign-ups.
Is it gonna be generic enough that it would be a benefit to us?
Yes. And it's, we're treating it more like a, we're treating it like a conference you would go to, I mean, just like the National School Board, you pick what you want to go to and you go and see it. It's two days after the last day of school, we hope we have enough people come back, but we're just doing it for a half-day, and we're gonna get, you know, we've gotten some vendors to give us some freebies and tie some people to come. School Board can't, so I'm sorry, you have to sign that document. The Week of Learning then also is another thing, we're collecting, we'll be collecting information out, but you know, last year, Week of Learning, there was four or five different Google classes that were offered. Again, we expect that to happen again, so we'll be doing that again over the summer. Actually, the idea for Google Days came from this year's, the 2013 August Week of Learning, where everyone said, I would have rather had this over the summer when I could have played with it than you giving it to me two days before I gotta go write name cards on my desk. So that's kind of where School Days comes from. Next year, we are starting with both middle and high school students, we'll start with their accounts. It's gonna be tied to their normal login, so really for students, we just had to say, go here and log in, they'll figure, no kidding. We'll have little trainings and things set up with them, but it'll probably be a little bit easier of a transition. The pilot groups of the students that are working now has been phenomenal, it really is, they're doing some very interesting stuff. For some reason, I got tagged on to one of the groups we created, I don't know why, but I see all of their work, that when I go into the thing and you're supposed to see the most recent, I have to like scroll down like five things because I've got every kid's documents they're sharing. It's neat for me to see that, but at the same time, I wish it would go away. And then we also are doing a Google Steering Committee that we're picking in May. Google, it's more than just the five or six apps that you see in Google Drive, there are like ninety other apps out there. What the Google Steering Committee is gonna do then is really kind of help us pick, when do we release those, when are they available? Some of them are social media apps, we have to be, you know, selective as to what we want, so that Steering Committee is not really on the educational side, it's more on the management of Google's side. Yes, it needs to sit with us, but we really need to hear from the teachers of what apps do they need? Because by default, they're off in our domain. I mean, if you have your own Gmail account, they're all listed, you can add any of them. In our domain, they're off, except for the four or five we want them to use. We'd have to be turning those on, and some of them, we want to make sure we're turning the right ones on and, you know, getting steering from the teachers to do that, so we're gonna have a Google Steering Committee working with us next year to run that out. We'll probably even ask the students on that too. Any questions on Google? Yes?
I have a question. The, I'd like to have you give me three examples of how this is used in, by the, I'm gonna pretend I'm a math teacher at Wheaton North High School, and I want to know what I would use, the three most prevalent uses today of that, you know, being in that environment that would be helpful for me.
In Google?
What were you just talking about?
I think one of the easiest things for, again, we'll go with math. One of the easiest things for math would be to do, math is one of those that oftentimes has to have check for understanding at the end of a lesson. So you have to make sure that the teacher, the students got whatever concept, so if it's a sixth grade and they're doing fractions or something like that, maybe it's a little bit of vocabulary, enumerating, denominating, or whatever it is. The teacher could have a form ready to go, they could have, you know, QR code up, they could have a link to a form with three or four questions and have the students put their name, they can get that automatic feedback right away to see which students might need a little reassurance later. They can connect to a chat group, and this is one of the real big benefits of this. It's in a hosted environment, we own this, that if a teacher wants to create a private place, and I want to make sure I say this correctly, learning in the cloud has taken the instruction not just from the teacher but also to the peers. Am I saying that correctly? Meaning that logging on and having an ability for an entire class, twenty-five kids to be on, one kid asks a question, again, there's a little bit of trust issue, there's social emotional, there's a lot of things with that, but if they ask the right question, their peers can help them. Think of it as sites online when you need help with computers and you go somewhere and somebody else told you how to do it. In schools that are very effective with that, we even saw that at Lightyear where the one set, that went to the chat room, and they'll ask the question and another student will answer before a teacher even logs on and sees it. So you have that peer-to-peer relationship where they can actually help the students learn that. Another thing could be just an open-ended Google Sites blog piece on math. We covered this today, who can explain what it is and have the kids log on and just answer that question. They can't do that once the bell rings and they walk out, but if they have that access to that thing anytime, anywhere, they can go and answer that later. Again, everybody learns from everybody else's concepts.
So, so does that mean that there's a, you know, again, there's an app or a program that exists or that's created? You know, let's go back to that testing one. You know, you do, let's call it a quiz, you know? So we have a quiz in that classroom, and there's twenty-five students in that classroom, they respond, and if they respond sufficiently, we know the concept's caught on or it hasn't.
Correct.
So who created the quiz?
The teacher.
Okay. And then, in theory, that teacher would share that with other teachers.
Correct. They either share with other teachers or just post it up on, here's the link, and the kids go and, you know, type in either a small Google link or do a QR code to it. It'll actually work on a phone, a Chromebook, whatever they want.
Okay, so, and just go back again, I think I preempted my statement by using it today. Today, we cannot do that.
No, we are using that today with the pilot groups. We can do it, we can do it without, we can do it now, yeah.
Pilot groups, meaning that there's enough devices to access that kind of information?
No, actually, the form survey could work now because we don't need to have that with only the students, but if they wanted to track the student's name without them typing in their name, they'd have to be using the student accounts. But even the teachers who just have Google now can use forms, we've been using forms for quite a while. We did it to ask, I'm trying to think the last time we did it.
I did it with social, emotional learning in general.
We learned at the championship board last week, Joe, Wheaton North students, that virtually every high school kid now has their own individual device. And so all of the kids, in your hypothetical math class, can log on, look at the post of course test that the teacher has posted, take the test either on their smartphone, iPad, computer at home, and do it that way. So at least at the high school level, in our district right now, virtually all of the kids have the ability to do that on Google Docs.
Now, the interesting thing is, systemically though, we can't guarantee it, and that's a challenge for us. That, however, the ability to do it is there. Systemically though, right now, we can't guarantee that that's available in every single classroom across our district.
And that's a combination.
That's right, well, it's a combination of things.
And part of the training, again, so seventeen have it logged in, and really, if you think of the other twenty-one that aren't in it all the time, we have sixty-two percent that are probably using, you know, informs is one of the first things they do, you know, it's one of the easier things that you can do to seek feedback. Think of it, a long time ago, it was the clickers, a long time, it was last year. Everybody wanted clickers? You don't need clickers anymore because you can just create a Google form and kids can answer it on their own phone, you don't need to buy five thousand dollars for the clicker sets, they can answer that form right there on their phone. And it's available, yeah.
If I can add an adotely, I was just at my teacher group yesterday, and one of the teachers, I think must be in this pilot group, and she was so excited, she brought in her Chromebook and said, let me show you what the kids are doing. And so for her, it was an essay that the students were working on, so she was able to pull up a student's essay and say, see, he wrote this, I highlighted this portion here and made a comment about something that needed to be changed. Then when he goes back, he sees I made a comment, because he can check in, then when he changes it, he puts the little indicator that says, I think I changed it, then she can go back and say, well, you're close, but, you know, there's still something else that needs to be done. So it's not even just like you can immediately get that eighty percent of your kids in the class get a concept, you could also, you know, student by student, on a much faster basis, be reacting to what they're saying or writing or doing. Do I, am I?
That's a great example. I don't know, Faith, if you've seen some things too, you may want to comment on it as well.
When you're talking about math class, they're writing really complicated proof for geometry, and they're struggling with it a little bit. You can share with another peer and get immediate feedback to be able to do that, and then you're like, oh, I need to redo this, instead of the, you know, all of those kinds of things to go back and make another revision, that happens. And part of Common Core is really being able to talk about your strategies and your thinking and to be able to defend that or see another way of doing that. The amount of sharing that can happen through just the Google Docs alone is really learning and feedback much faster and easier from many, from your peers, from teachers in the evenings, all kinds of things, that is making that a lot more robust than what we've had in the past.
Key point there, that can happen at seven o'clock at night with each kid sitting in their own bed, not during the forty-five minute timeframe, sitting at Wheaton North in that class.
So Google Docs is not an app, okay? It's a data sharing device, if you want to call it that.
It's just a website, it's just a browser, it works in the cloud, so anywhere where you can get on the internet, you can access it.
How does digital textbooks fit into that? I think I'm, the thing that's confusing me here a little bit is that we have a textbook, digital or otherwise, we have, you know, quizzes in those textbooks, I'll call it, and now we're gonna create another whole set of tests and so on, you know, it seems to me we're kind of duplicating the process.
A lot of the things that would be in the textbook, you would have lots and lots of problems that you would be able to do, but the types of things that we're talking about is at the end of, or the teacher gives instruction for fifteen, twenty minutes, wants a quick, how is everybody doing? You used to be able to give, okay, five questions and they'd do it on the textbook, and you'd have to, okay, what'd you get from question one?
Or self-grading.
Right, self-graded, turn your paper to the next. Now it's just press it and go, and then you know whether you have eighty percent of your students with you, whether you have ten percent of your students with you, and how to differentiate and be able to go on, where that used to take quite a bit of time. If you're just doing the digital textbook and they're not allowed to put in those answers right away, that would slow that down. So teachers were still creating quick quizzes or, you know, four-minute check for understanding types of things when they had paper and pencil, it just took a lot of time. Teachers were still creating those types of assessments, but with this, those types of assessments are very, very quick, and you can get on to the instruction or differentiate these.
Yeah, so don't think of it as like end of the unit test, this is more of a, maybe daily one or two-minute questions, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down, did you all understand that? No kid's gonna go like this, I mean, when everyone's looking, but when they can ask, you know, answer the two or three questions, the teacher can see their name and follow up with them later if they know they didn't get it, so.
I think the biggest thing that troubles me is only sixty-two percent of the teachers, I believe, was the statistic, have accessed this, and I would think that as we move more into this direction, there's gonna be people that understand technology and people that don't. And I'm worried that, you know, I think there's some selection process that goes on with teacher choice by students and so on, that we're gonna have a whole set of teachers that are not technologically sound, and, you know, they're gonna have vacant tech classrooms and not get served, so, you know.
And I, and see, and I see the figure sixty-two percent, and I'm actually excited by that because it's not anything we have mandated at all. We just said, here's something that some people have found useful and the thing we might be looking at. Now, we, I did actually have another, because of the roadmap, I took off the timeline, I had a timeline in front of us as to what Google looked like, and you'll see that actually here when we get to the targets, maybe I'll talk a little more about it then, but there will be more of a focus if that's the avenue that we go where we do. I won't say mandate yet, but where we really are going to encourage, that this is where we're going to meet digitally with the students. And then, right now, sixty-two percent's pretty good, but we're not telling them they have to do it.
Ten years ago, we probably initially turned on email, sixty percent of the teachers jumped on. We had forty percent that didn't. At some point, you say, that's it, this is a job function, everybody's on, everybody's engaged. We're, we turned this on in November. So, I mean, that's, that's what's happened over a period of five months. And Brian is gonna talk about that. Again, we have to balance capacity of the organization compared to, you know, where we're at with our PD opportunities as well as the equipment that's available. That's what we want to talk about here moving forward. It's a good point, but it's certainly, at some point, they'll say, that's, this is part of it. This is an instructional tool that's required. You know, everybody's got to be in the game. Quite frankly, the kids are going to drive that. It, it's not going to be an option.
Wait till August, yeah.
It, it's not going to be an option too much longer here, uh, where the kids are going to drive that whole scenario.
And also just quickly, I just want to make sure that the statistic is right because actually it was eighty-three percent have logged in at one time or another. It was just sixty-two percent in the last five days. And one of the things that the kids from Wheaton North said when they were at the chance to check, because we did ask them about technology, what do you use, what, and we even asked them about the one-on-one, you know, which way would you go? One of the comments they said is, you know, we kind of like the balance between technology and still some traditional teaching methods, paper and pencil. So I don't necessarily think it should be our expectation that a hundred percent of the teachers use technology a hundred percent of the time to teach everything that they're going to do. So to me, it would make sense that you'd have a percentage on and off at any one time.
Also with, at Wheaton North, uh, and it's a really shame that we chose the day to have that, that, you know, was, was the worst for you to be there. Uh, but a couple of students to follow up on, Rosemary said, we're talking about, you know, how, how they have to write, uh, you know, they write essays typing, basically. You know, nobody does paper pencil anymore. I guess for some of them, was it an AP exam? They had to write, they had to handwrite it. And so they, and, and they have a certain timeframe, you know, it's a very tight timed test. And so they were practicing in the classroom, uh, how to write with paper and pencil so they, they knew what their time would be once they got to the test. So, so, you know, I think, uh, you know, we, we can't just say we're doing this exclusively. We have to still provide for a variety of ways to get things done until we get to a point where maybe the technology is caught up, let's say with the AP exams and, you know, with everything else that's going on. So I, I just think it's important to, to keep that in mind.
Rob, could someone else?
Could you give me a little insight into the pilot groups? Who's doing this? What grade, what subject? Can you tell you where it started, where it's now? I have no clue because I go through Eric and it's pretty much, don't, turn the camera on. If you ask the pilot, we're going to get you the cameras. The, the student accounts are already there. We turned them all on the same time we turned the staff. We just tell them all, we can't handle all of that, not knowing if, if staff was ready. It started mainly at Edison and Monroe. It has grown to probably in some way, shape or form, when it comes with students, to at least all four of the middle schools and high school. Now, North is piloting an, an older version of Google that we use because we used to have two different, a staff side and a student side. They know that they wanted to keep some of the functions they had there. Um, they've been doing it for about two years now, working with Karen Sad. Um, and we have some elementary students that are doing it. Fourth grade at Washington who, they were so excited, they shared all their docs with me too when they were done, their, their shared turtle research. It was, it was impressive. Um, but, you know, and that was a last minute. It was someone at the last minute who said, I saw this, so-and-so's doing this, can I have student accounts? Now, those aren't named at the elementary level because of rules, so it's her last name, student one, student two, student three. But I created them really quick and said, use these until we figure out, you know, how to get your students on. She loved it and she's using it on a daily basis now, so. There's, it's grown to well more than twenty groups are probably piloting in some way, shape or form, some aspect of Google Drive.
So looking forward, I guess that's, like giving your little roadmap there.
Those are supposed to be headstones. Wasn't until later everyone?
Do we, do we just let, are we just anticipating that teacher or additional teachers or subjects will latch on to this and let the pilot group grow? And then would we anticipate that that would then be the, just behind one-to-one initiative within those individual groups?
Yeah, they kind of run hand in hand, but I, I think next year's going to be the really big year. And our plan was to give the middle school and high school students a place to store stuff, mainly so that they have, what they want more? Yes, students, staff want their documents at home and at work, so a lot of them have gone. The high school students really want them. They hate flash drives, yet they're all using them because there's no way for them to get their assignment from their H drive to home without emailing. And we all know, students don't email. They don't know how anymore. I'm not sure why, something happened and kids forgot how to email, but we all lived with email, but, um, so though, we think that'll, that'll start to drive it, but we do have, you know, again, a very scheduled and, um, working with the principals and again, from the leadership side of doing trainings in each of the buildings. We've hit all but I think three or four where we've kind of formally done some type of a here it is, you know, drive-by where they come in and get their login and stuff like that. Uh, we've had a couple of problems scheduling some of them still, but those will carry on a little bit more and we'll have some very set professional development opportunities next year based on just portions of it, just forms, just how to use it with students, just how to, but I think we're going to try, the real approach is to get the teachers comfortable with what they need to use and give the students, I think, what they want right now. And we think in the next, again, now I'm kind of wishing I had that timeline in there because it was about a three-year plan that showed what next year was, the following year and the following year before we really think we're, you know, fully vested off of email and onto Gmail in some way, shape or form, um, you know, a full rollout plan. Most districts that, you know, are going one-to-one now might have been in Google for three or four years already, so. Um, we're at the beginning stages of it, but again, to have eighty-three percent, you're right, login, but sixty-two percent in the last five days is the big one for me to say, they didn't just log in once, they're coming back. They're doing it for a reason, they, they need to go there to find stuff. Um, it's, eventually we'll only put stuff there, probably from the district level that will get more people to go there if they want to find things, so.
Is that sixty, is that sixty-two percent teachers?
That is sixty-two percent. It's a good question. That is actually, it's eighty percent of the staff or up, one thousand and fifty-three of twelve hundred and seventy-five is the numbers I have. I'm not sure if that's exactly correct. Um, from, because then I pulled the other day, a different, a different date, but, um, those are all ten-month administrators, twelve-month administrators, all certified staff, and all clerical who work in main offices because they've been, we actually meet with the secretaries twice, we've done trainings with them. So those people that we know we've reached out to. Now, I still have about four hundred considered clerical and, um, classified aides that have also logged in. I didn't include them in that number because that right now, they got the same email and said, you want it, go get it. Um, but that's, you know, as we think of the staff that we're trying to reach, the twelve hundred out of the like seventeen hundred or so that we have on the list, that's that number.
Faith, anything else? Any viewer?
I was just going to add that, uh, as our administrators become much more proficient and comfortable using this, that will exponentially grow. And there are some, um, kind of crazy things that happened over the summer as principals set up, well, how am I going to do my sharing of documents? How am I going to set up my calendar? How am I going to do all of those things? And, um, certainly, you know, Rod's been having the conversation, I've been having the conversation, like, okay, well, I got to sit down with you because next August, we're going, you know, we're going to do it this way. I'm, we'll show my age and I remember when I used to put copies of my weekly memo to my staff and I put them in all their mailboxes and that was part of my routine that I did Friday before I left. And then we did email and those for a while because not everybody had figured out how to do email. And then I said, okay, we are now announcing that I'm not going to be putting the pieces of paper in your mailbox anymore on Friday. And that alone caused, you know, people to, to figure out more how this is going to work. As our administrators take on this role and start using and sharing and that kind of thing, that not only will make teachers log in, but they, because they're using it that way, will feel more comfortable and find creative ways to use those same kind of tools within their classrooms. Um, so that's, that's starting. Um, you know, I know Joanna's department is using it. We have a Google site and every professional development, and this is on the Google site and you'll have three or four hints, and how do I do that again? So, you know, you, you teach and you reteach and then the more critical of mass that happens, and it happens more at the middle and the high school because students are, are on that demand and accessing that, then, um, when they go back to their school, maybe there were two people that know how to do that and now there are twelve people, so they're not emailing me or Rod, they're just walking next door to somebody who's already done it. So there's that exponential growth, um, those numbers even higher as we progress.
I think just to clarify what I was saying earlier, that schedule there has to be a hundred percent of the people that know how to use it. And they may use it thirty percent of the time, sixty percent of the time, but that number, the twenty-one percent troubles me, I guess is my point. You know, again, we're not forcing them into it, but there's going to be a, you know, some core goal that just isn't going to be, you know, that just is not going to be in the technology. And I think that, that's the part that concerns me. I, you know, see that in every business we work with and so on. There are people that are technical and they, so use the device and then there's, you know, others that don't.
Right, well, and I, and I think to face point though, I think that, not to say that's why we started with administration, but we knew if we got them sharing all of their stuff, their staff would have to go there to get it. The same way they used to get the letter in the mailbox, the same way they used to read through email. We also know, I mean, I know, I see the statistics, not everybody still reads the email. I know that, and it's a shocking number when you think about it, when we send out a critical email and four days later, I'm still at only sixty percent. You know, until someone says, I sent it to you, do they go to their email? We have a lot of people that do that still. You know, a lot of people are usually texting to communicate anyway, so, um, I, I think this will improve. Again, it, it has not been mandated in any way. That sixty-two percent do go in in five days means there's enough. I mean, that's eight hundred, you know, six hundred people that went in in that five days, which in my honest opinion is probably more than the front three. Maybe on that same day.
That's a long way from classroom delivery though. I mean, reading the email.
It is, it is. Beginning stages, it is, you're right.
But this has changed so quickly in five months, I don't think we're that far away. And I think we're going to talk about that here real soon. It's going to be a critical job function. It's just going to be the expectation. It's like we went to online grading at middle school and high school. They don't, they don't do paper report card, you know, it's all, they have no choice, no choice. And it'll be the same way in this environment very, very, so.
Um, okay, so instead of doing a graph with, uh, you know, financials and things like that to do the plans, we really kind of wanted to do where we could have them on talking points. Um, I kind of broke up the work that technology does into three areas. Now, of course, we'd do more than that. I could have circled the whole thing in PD and desktop support and a whole bunch of other stuff. But I really want to say that when it comes to our planning, what are the types of things we do? Um, one big part of it is educational. This is, you know, what's happening in the classroom, how are we supporting that? Um, where do we have to pair with curriculum? Where do we have to pair with special ed to make some of these things happen? Um, the infrastructure, network and systems to me is the kind of what things we have to have in place when it comes, you know, and sometimes that would have been all I wrote about. I think if I go back to my five-year plan, a lot of it was those type of changes. You'll see now, a lot of it is still more evaluation and planning modes. Then we have the administrative software systems and, uh, when I look back at those old plans, we really didn't talk about that, but we have over thirty-seven different systems in the district. Um, and we've changed the major ones, but special ed has NetIEP, um, school dude with, uh, the facilities team, our web help desk. You know, I consider these secondary systems, the HR system is definitely not a secondary system, but these systems that might not always reach down into the classroom level sometimes, we have to continually keep those things up to date too. And again, there are thirty-seven of them that we keep up to date on a daily basis. So we have to start to add those to, you know, a more, um, you know, a critical plan for us to always evaluate those and not have it come down to the last minute and someone be like, oh, this is upgrading, you need to plan time this summer. So we're starting to work with different departments to make sure of those things. So for this next school year, the twenty-fourteen, fifteen targets, um, we do have Google up there again, as this is a major focus of us, um, again, introducing it to the middle and high school students and then really trying to, you know, have a strategic plan to make sure we have given the time to every building that the principal wants to make sure their staff is using it, seeing if we can really get those principals on board. Um, also trying to find it, not just, there is the part of us that really wants to make sure teachers are using it professionally. Yes, we always want to get to where it's at instructionally, but they need to find out how to use it themselves first. And that's kind of what we did this year. We've already had twenty people that say, I got it up here, now let me use it with my students. We hope that grows. We have the fifth committee work this, this coming year. Really that plan of where, what education and what instruction is going to look like in the classroom? The pedagogy change and curricular changes, how we're going to address those and help teachers to address those. Uh, the one-to-one planning, and again, it does seem to plan, but as it's, it's happening all over, we need to, to think as a district and seeking the teacher input and everybody's input, is this feasible for us? What do we need to do? How do we plan? We don't want to not plan it. Does the schools have been planning it? It takes two years to plan. If this is something we want to eyeball a few years down the line, we need to start having some really hard numbers in place, not just financially, but PD hours, all types of planning situations, infrastructure, systems in place to manage these types of things. Or if it's going to be BYOD instead of one-on-one, if that's not feasible, or a ten devices per classroom, how are we going to prepare for that? Um, because those have, that has a direct effect of what we do in the classroom. We have the ELO year one. I want to prepare what ELO stands for. I get an email from them every day, um, year one. And then we also have the professional development, which again, you know, this year for, at least for, Faith, that's her professional development for us, this could be a lot on Google and those types of systems. Um, infrastructure-wise, we do have in the plan, uh, this is now being pushed back three years, but we, I have it in the plan for next year to get to finally the six and twelve classroom teachers laptops. That's, that's something that we've earmarked, um, you know, and it's been, it's been a couple of years. Next year, we're going to get this done, uh, probably not over the summer, but we'll roll it out sometime in the fall so we can do a, a real nice PD with it, not just hand it to them at, you know, first day of school, but do it where we can get some time with them, hand it to them, show them how the, how the device works. Projectors and things are changing, so we need to, you know, it's no longer VGA everywhere. People need to know how to use those so that when they take it home, they can connect it to things, stuff like that. Um, we, we had to finish up the server room configuration. We started that this, this past year with the increase of, um, funding. We're still, we're right now waiting on, um, permits from, to bring over some more power for that room. Um, but for my guys, that's something we still have to finish. We still have some devices downstairs. We're ready, it's just staging them up, but it'll probably happen during the next year. Um, we have the one-to-one device planning, again, infrastructure-wise, more on my guys. Guys, what do we need to make sure we're going to be planning this? What does it look like from our end? Printing solution. During that one survey, I mean, I also talked about the tickets, printing is one of the biggest ones, which sounds like the dumbest thing, the printing is one of the, you know, number one things. The reason it's the number one thing is because most of our printers are over nine years old. Granted, they still work, but they're nine years old. I mean, they're yellow, beyond yellow, some of them. But to really start to look at what a printing solution looks like for our district, twenty buildings is a lot of buildings. We have a whole bunch of printers, probably ones, too many that we need. What does a solution look like? There is usually a little capital piece, but we want to be able to bring something to the board sometime in the next year and say, here's a solution to get us there. Maybe it's handling elementarys at a time, middles at a time, high schools, I'm not sure yet, but we're going to be doing that plan. Bandwidth evaluation, you're going to see that every year. Again, right now, we're sitting pretty, but we thought we were sitting pretty at a hundred meg too, and it didn't take more than a month for them to hit two hundred. Other than they haven't cruised more above four hundred yet. And then a wireless survey, we need to look at that. We, we always monitor that anyways, but to increase spots where we have dead zones. Since we've put in the access points, we've already added twelve access points, um, you know, along, just where, we built it one for every other, it's kind of like here, it was one in, fills two classrooms, but we did get some, you know, in some of the high school areas, we needed some extras. We've been piecing those together as we go. We're always looking at that, especially if we get to an area where, um, Monroe and Edison have both, um, PTAs have purchased a handful of Chromebooks. Well, now that classroom is being held in one with maybe not an access point in it, maybe we need to put one in there. So right now, we're kind, we're following where the need is. Um, administrative software, we are looking at, new capacity, doing a pilot next fall with, um, Power School. Uh, we have been working with synergy, we can talk about that in a little bit. Um, things have gotten much better, but we did have a committee this year with the problems with synergy from, uh, previous year, looking at another solution. Um, so we'll see what another one looks like to see if there's anything better, um, with no commitment yet, just kind of toes in the water. Uh, HR finance system, I think I've had that on the list every year since we started to, that's probably the last big major system that we are still keeping, now it's fourteen-year-old AS400 system up and running for that. Um, again, Google and the administrative side, we are working with secretaries and we are using it professionally. Um, again, with secondary servers, printing solution, then this year, um, Julio Zmikowski's looking to add in the data warehouse. Again, not used by a lot of people, but it will be used heavily by the curriculum and we have to make sure that we can support that and, you know, I don't know if I can remember if it's a dashboard or not. Eventually, it could be something we all look at. So it is something new for us to have a data warehouse. For that? Yes?
You know, the last community engagement meeting, we talked about classroom of the future, I guess that was the term we moved away from, but I know a lot of school districts are talking about the types of equipment in the room, not just smart boards, those D projectors, but wireless projection to a lot of kids too. You know, wireless, they show their, their device on the screen. Where does that fall into, I would imagine, say they're in the green or the red category? Is that something that, you know, should we?
It, no, it, it wouldn't be in the red category, but one of the historical things in, in this district is we've really only handled laptops and desktop. Right now, most schools have purchased those. We are starting that, um, at Weeden South. Um, we have, uh, they're using Apple TVs in some. We are using, um, we're trying to get Chromecast working for this. Um, we actually found we have to do upgrades on our wireless controllers for the, for some of those things to work. All new projectors are going in, we are having networked. Again, it then comes down to cable poles, we have enough ports, we left them open. It's just kinda then going and all the projectors we bought in the last two years can be networked. It's slowly piecing those together. To me, that's just part of work, that's not, I don't have a master plan to do it all because there's a huge dollar amount. But for the school, it says, "I wanna start using this in my room now." We can do one-Z, two-Zs. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Uh, there's not a huge master plan. I think it's part of that too, I was probably waiting on what the community engagement said. We wanna fill out those last thirty rooms, what are we, what are our plans for those?
Would that be something that they may need to evaluate is, you know, what does the classroom look like?
Yeah, because, for example, not every classroom may need that. You know, we may want to target certain classrooms for certain curricular needs and certain instructional strategies. So that's why the one, you know, the cookie cutter approach in every room probably is not a good solution at this point.
I would imagine it would be those classrooms that begin to pilot a one-to-one model, so maybe some of those try, want to explore using that kinda wireless projection from the individual device.
Yeah, and again, we are doing that now at Weeden South. It's, we've got a few rooms that are already doing that, those who wanna teach on their iPad, um, using a Mac Air server or something like that to project up. Chromecast has a little problem in our network right now and that's mainly because Google sells Chromecast and Chrome devices as a residential, not as a, they're not built to work in schools. They're making it difficult because they don't want it to become that.
I'm sure my ignorance, what is ELO?
I forgot too already.
It's the virtual learning.
Virtual learning consortium. I know it's virtual learning, I just remember what it stands for.
Yeah. I just learning, I forgot. No.
Extended learning opportunities.
All the acronyms in my head.
Again, that's an educational change that wanted to, you know, with our partner districts.
When you get to be a certain age, you do.
Hey, all these acronyms and all this stuff, it's, it's a lot.
And I'm, and I'm gonna ask a clarifying question as well. You know, I mean, I understand to bring your own device, but you, you seem to make a big distinction between BYOD and one-to-one. Now, one-to-one, I would think in my mind is a subset of BYOD because this could be the one and that could be the one. Is that, is that, am I seeing that correctly or, or, I mean?
To me, BYOD gives people access on a device that they're comfortable with. For a teacher to plan instruction based on BYOD, and, and again, three years ago, everyone thought that was the rage and they went with it. Since then, there's a lot of districts that have gone. That was tough because, and, and it's not that no one has access, our network can support BYOD, it does now. That's what we built our network for. The problem is the teacher saying, "I wanna teach this and I'm gonna use this device." And we have twelve different types of phones and this person doesn't know how to get on and they have a tablet and you have Windows 8, you know, you can't stand. I mean, there's, don't get me on the Windows 8, but, you know, there's all different kinds of things like that that make it difficult that the teachers who were doing BYOD kinda give up. Because then it becomes more like they're a tech hand in a building when things just shouldn't work. Um, for a full version, the device probably has to be similar. And one-on-one doesn't mean it all has to, you know, you can still get to all the things fit's gonna do with ten of the same device somewhere. And we've been putting laptops out there, so don't think we're gonna shortchange if you can't get to one-on-one. It's just, we do BYOD right now. We don't hear a lot of people raving about it. I mean, the access is there, the kids might look things up, many teachers probably think they're texting about too many things. I mean, there's, but we're, we support BYOD now. We let everything in, we let everything on the network, so.
Thank you.
Yes?
It's, um, our, our teachers that perhaps are less tech savvy, um, it's a lot more daunting of a task to say, "Everybody bring in your own device and I'm going to be able to help you on whatever device you have to be able to do what I've asked you to do." Where if you have everyone with a very similar device, you can either project the screenshot or, or those kinds of things and, and help everybody navigate, um, through that. Also, if you bring your own device and I forget it, I'll say we don't have that, our mind doesn't work today, where if you have devices on hand for people to be able to use that, um, and then there also is, which we haven't really talked about, but for our students that don't have a device that they can bring, um, family income, various reasons, then that also is, is, uh, hard to overcome in a bring-your-own-device situation.
I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be sure I understood the, the distinction, uh, and I think that pretty much explains it. It's just, it's just in one-to-one, you support the, the device that the teacher has and you support the device that the student has, and you know what it is and your lessons are planned to all work together. Whereas BYOD, it's all for grabs. Um, but this, but it is a lot.
And, and to me, BYOD is, when we all thought about it, is you can Google anything. So if everybody has a device, they can look it up. But I think the changing of instruction and even Common Core turned it into, it's more about collaboration and it's more about, you know, the, the understandings and things you build. Phones are very personal devices and you can still collaborate and communicate with them, but it's difficult for us to plan around, everyone get in this chatroom, "Well, if your phone doesn't have Java, you can't," and if, you know, there's, there's too many, so they're allowed, it's easier for the teacher. And I can say it's easier for the student, students might still be fine with what they have, but it becomes very difficult for a teacher to teach around digital learning without just saying, "Go read this there and go look this up." It becomes very limited.
And I think our, our students, again, from our, our conversation with North, really did appreciate, uh, not, not, uh, being confined to one device because they found that, that they learned by having to transition to, you know, what one teacher did with this device and a different teacher did with a different device. That prepared them for what they have to face every day, you know, with different devices, so.
Correct.
Sorry.
Sorry. Um, yours to?
Before we move on. Uh, can we go back? Uh, yeah, there. Uh, you know, again, I think that, you know, we're dealing with a technology update here again, and I, and I don't, I'm not getting what I really want out of this presentation. And that is, what are, what do we need infrastructure and what kinda dollars do we need to do that? Okay, we're approaching a, a budget to procuring, we're gonna be moving into dollars and cents or else. And, uh, you know, this is the major thing that prevent, that causes us to, uh, be short-falling or whatever it is to be in the technology area. So, you know, one component of this is, again, the infrastructure. We, you know, we have to say, okay, what, you know, do we wanna have, you know, access everywhere? And if so, what's that price there? We've talked about each class level being a million-dollar cost of something, and, you know, I think that's in, in, independent of the, uh, infrastructure, et cetera. So I guess I'm trying to, you know, I think we need to have, as we talk about technology, we have to blend this into the economics of the world. And, and that economic is gonna be dealt with very shortly when we're talking about fourteen and fifty technology targets and, and budgeting. And, you know, I think in the last, from what I recall, we've been, uh, not, whatever it's called, fully funded, the technology area. And, you know, whether we can do that or we can't. I mean, this is, this is coming up in the engagement presentation in the next one.
Correct.
And, you know, I heard in the last, uh, engagement program, technology being a highly demanded, demanded issue, I think there was some misunderstanding at that point about the, uh, infrastructure deficiency, I call it. And, you know, I, I think we're further along than that was implied at that night. You know, I could see your eyes rolling that night a little bit because I think we haven't achieved that, that we can move forward from a long, you know, in a relatively short time to get there. So really, it comes down to what is the equipment need, what are the costs and the dollars to get to where we wanna be? And I guess, you know, that to me is what I need to see out of this. And I, you know, and I, I, I enjoy hearing this, but it's not getting to the substance of what I think we need to deal with as a board.
Well, can I finish the next two slides? Because you lead right to where we didn't go to that. And if I finish the next two slides, we'll lead into a discussion then where we can discuss that.
I would actually suggest that we finish this out because I think a lot of those questions and maybe some of the others, board members have the same thing, are gonna be answered here in the next five to ten minutes. Um, bottom line is, on this slide, there's no red text. In our current budget, we can support everything that's on this screen and what we believe the organization, the capacity of organization can handle. One key, uh, significant purchase here is that top one in the red, which is the six, twelve laptops. That is a huge capacity change for every teacher at the middle school and high school level. All of a sudden, now they got a device. And that is a prerequisite before we jump into the next couple of years. And now we have some red on the next couple of slides and I, I would suggest that we go through this and then I think that some of your concerns, Jim, might be answered, okay?
So again, we have the, the sacred column of educational infrastructure, and I'm not gonna read all these. I read the first ones just to give you where we're looking for these. I'll just highlight some of the new ones. Uh, again, a real big focus on the student Google use at that time. What that means is that's probably where we'll stop giving students network access to the servers. So we don't have to read up a server that year and two years down, we're gonna tell students, "All of your document creation and storage is now in the cloud," which I think will be met with a rise. Um, a few of the specialty labs will have special servers, but again, we're trying to transition. We pay for the servers that they use now. If we can get all the student stuff up into the cloud a year from now, that'll be a focus of ours for middle and high school. Um, the one-to-one implementation, again, you'll see that that is red, that is not yet in factored into the budget. But again, as we start to do this planning and stuff, you know, after the first year planning is, when you wanna implement something like that. We're looking at that in a learning management system. Um, right now, the ELO is gonna be using Canvas. We technically do not have a learning management system. That is like a blackboard system or a place where they meet online. Google might be that system for us, we don't know. We need to evaluate, can Google meet us where we need students to turn things in, where we can, um, communicate with them, where we can upload things and, um, stuff like that? And again, professional development. The changes in the, uh, red column, again, things we need to do, kinda more of the financial stuff, cable, teacher laptops would be that year. Again, it's red, it's not getting without increases or something, it's not in my forecasted budget, but it is one of those we wanna put in the plan. Again, the one-to-one implementation. We'll be doing a bunch of different evaluations. This is also the year that we would have that elementary desktop refresh. So we have to make a decision at that time, are we gonna refresh elementaries? Will we extend them a few years, maybe use that money differently? We have some choices we have to make, we're available, we can do any of those. After the evaluation of printing, that might be when we would start, the beginning of the printing about, uh, implementation at that time. And then again, bandwidth evaluation and I, wireless upgrades this time, this is now red because we probably have to start adding access points if we're doing one-on-one. I can tell you right now to add access points to finish out the high schools completely. Now again, the high schools, every building in our district is one-hundred percent wireless. There are very few nooks and crannies you are not going to get wireless. Maybe the very corner of a room somewhere, if it's way out in the hall or something like that. We have heat maps of all those. What we need to do is add them for saturation. In this room, if there's twenty of us and we all have two devices, that thing needs to be able to handle forty connections. Um, one high school is thirty-three more access points, that's one in every instructional room. To add thirty-three and the other one is like, uh, twenty-four. So we're at fifty-seven, I knew that method. Fifty-seven access points will finish out the high school, just for your references to where we're at, to where they are one-hundred percent ready. Those access points that we purchased, they look exactly like those, can handle the ninety, that's one classroom with thirty kids with three devices on them, which is not hard to think of. So we have one of those in every classroom, that's the upgrades we need to do. We have enough switches to handle all those, so. Then again, we have the HR finance system, after evaluating, rolling that out that year. Um, I put in Google HAPARO, which is, again, could be that learning management, um, and then printing solution, and again, those secondary systems. Reason I keep putting that up there is every year, the secondary systems have caught us off guard and someone planned something instead of we're switching this and didn't work with us, so.
Every one of those red items do not have a budget, uh, projection item lined up with it. To do those things, we would have to have additional dollars in some way. We have to have a revenue source to be able to do that.
Uh, and then again, it'll be three years out, which in all honesty, will probably change in a year, but let's, let's do it. Uh, that's when we're gonna tell all the staff that they're losing the restraints, no, I'm kidding. Uh, that's when we're actually doing it, and that is a bigger change than you think, telling, and a lot of staff want it, but to tell them that we're gonna move everything to them for the cloud and that they store all of their stuff up there, again, you've already seen they've moved ninety thousand things already. So that's a lot from the servers because they wanted that access at home. But this is also a tad bit of a money saver. This is about the year that the servers we invested in three years ago start to become a little problematic. Well, we either decide, do we buy five more servers and VM them for the storage and stuff, or do we start and move all of this stuff to the cloud? It, it's, there's, there's, you know, decisions to make. There's not huge savings with those, but that's kinda why they're tied in at that year, that, that's the, that's the year we would do that. Um, again, professional development, ELO year three is actually not in the budget yet. We assume we'll still be there. Again, implementation year two, learning management system. Um, in the red, completing the certified staff. Again, our classroom teachers are listed as classroom teachers when I said we're gonna purchase a classroom teachers. That's not every certified staff. Kind of broken down, so counselors, those people that sit at computers, we're all class certified staff that sit with a computer in front of us at our desk. A lot of people who change rooms are who we're gonna focus on first. Uh, implementation, printing, this is the year we probably need to really start to evaluate the switches and the hardware. I know that's a hard thing to look at when we just put them in in three years. It, it's not the wear and tear of them, it's the, it's the type of technology they are. Is, is that access point gonna be able to handle? Do we need to switch to different types of access points at that time? Um, we really wanna not get behind that like we did before where we're getting rid of nine-year-old switches and, you know, we wanna make sure we at least evaluate. That would be the middle school desktop refresh, and again, there'd need to be upgrades. We then, these are two new services of Google, these are pay services, I know Google is free itself, but if we do move everything staff-wise, we have to pay for them. For FOIA purposes and everything else, I can't, we can't lose email, we can't lose vaulted services, even though Google says it's always there, it's always there, you're never gonna lose it. If forty typhoons at the same time, we're in trouble. Um, but Google Vault is a per, person and that's for staff mailing, that we have an archive system for their, for them to go and get their old stuff as well.
Rod, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Uh, on that first, uh, twenty-fourteen, uh, fifteen target, on the admin side, did the student information system evaluation and it disappeared on the next two, or did you consolidate somewhere?
No, that's really the evaluation. Until we do that evaluation, we don't know if we're gonna switch or we're gonna stay with synergy. And I think we won't know that until next fall and right now, I don't have plans. Either way, that money's allocated, even if we switch, because it's either paying for one or the other. Uh, there, there might be a little delta, but not, not too, we're paying for student information system. This is more the work administratively, like we all knew synergy would, you know, was causing problems, so what are we gonna, what are we doing about it? And that's gonna be an evaluation. Okay, then going down to some of the costs that we talked about, um, where you wanted to hear, but again, this is for one grade level. These are, I don't wanna say high level, but, uh, these are very, probably fairly close estimates. Right now, if we were to do this at a grade level, um, thinking about how many classrooms and rooms there are, we probably need to add fifty access points. Um, even again, even though I said fifty would almost cover the entire high schools to finish them out, freshmen don't just sit in one area. Or in sixth grade, they don't just sit in one area, you gotta have to fill an area and really, you put it in there. We also need to buy more licensing, um, bundles. We're maxed out. We bought seven hundred when we first came, when we first started. The way that they're dimming up, we'd have to add a few more. The way that they're dipping up, we'd have to add a few more. One-to-one time cost, the 20,000 would be a yearly. Chromebooks are about $300. That does include the management suite. You'll hear Chromebooks are 250, that's correct. $30 for the management suite. And on-hand additional devices, I just rounded it up to 300. It's a figure a lot of people have used. A thousand might get us exactly what we need by think, Jim, if you remember, they had how many extra that they used to use for handout? We're a little bit over 930 or something at one of the grade levels coming in. 70, split across three or four schools, is not enough. And if we're going to have teachers start teaching instruction based on thinking kids have devices, they have to have devices. If the devices come not charged, we need to have another one available for them. If they forget one at home, we need to have one available. So raising the price of an extra 15 gives us those few extras we have to, you know, have a, I mean, essentially a library cart full of 30. They hand in their other one, it gets charged, and they get another one. We have to add costs for different types of apps, bags, insurance account fees, all of that, different kinds of stuff. That comes up to about $85. I can break that out if you'd like. We said that we wouldn't, we can't do this. I wouldn't, I think I said the word can't. We can't do this without more staff, to be honest. If we're going to add a thousand devices, two technical staff would be two, you know, entry-level techs to handle about 500 devices each. We've added 2,500 devices since I've been here, and we haven't added staff in that way. We've added, switched people around. We're also, you know, adding, the increase of instructional coaches with this for every $500 device also, to help those teachers, you know, in the classroom while they're teaching, helping them plan more than just PD. The sit-and-get PD doesn't work for this. So these would be people that are in the buildings, and that would grow for every new grade level. So this is a very good rough estimate, you know, $70,000 or $700, 70, I put a grade of seven. $700,000 is about what we estimate. That price slowly tapers down a little as you get further because some of these, I don't want to say we would top out, face probably yell at me and go, I want every instructional coach, but we know that they'll top out. I know they'll top out staff-wise. Once I get an extra three or four or five, they might start to go, we're good. We, you know, we're good now, we can handle it. The new that come in, we have a routine. We don't need to add for every, but in the front end, we want to make sure we have enough. Because we definitely don't want to add one for every thousand and then have it become an issue and people are frustrated because things aren't getting repaired fast enough. There's not, you know, one person can't, right now, we have Lee Cook who goes through the whole district. I mean, it's just not enough. So that's the estimate, you know, broken down kind of what the one year looks like. Yes?
So if I look at those numbers, though, it's like $220,000 of annual costs between technical support and instructional coaches. That's every year? Is that right?
Yes.
And that would be $480,000 of one-time costs?
Okay, which one? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm taking the 700,000 and taking out the recurring annual cost.
This would be recurring annual cost almost every year. Obviously, this will fall off because every year you have a new grade level coming in. Now, the access points will slowly die off after a few years. So really, this is the bigger cost that's going to be an annual every year. Because if we even go all 13 grade levels now, next year, you need another 700. Next year, you need another, just see what I mean? Your lease for the equipment to come in each year, you're going to need. This is more the, this will end up sustaining itself and becoming every-year cost, but really, all of this will. This will too. The only thing that won't is that. Once all the access points are purchased and the PD is done, we're probably, there won't be a lot of savings. I mean, it's.
See, this is for just one grade?
Yeah, I understand. So let's talk about, you know, a long-term rotation.
The next one then, again, if we were to look at this and stretch it out and say, okay, we did our pilot, the pilot group is just the first grade level. Then we were to add two grade levels, four grade levels, three grade levels. That gets us all the way to three through 12. You're looking at over a four-year period, you know, roughly four, 5,400,000. And again, that's, that's just the cost. I'm not saying we don't have any savings anywhere else or anything. It's not the whole hard line. That's just what the dollars amount to coming up. This, again, is a $300 device. This is based on a 500 or an iPad. Chromebook, iPad. If you want a MacBook Air, I can put a $1,000 device out there. Anyone?
That assumes that the district provides a device for every student rather than the option to purchase it?
Right, because we, yes, that's a different discussion. But yes, that's what it costs, no matter how we get the money in. Does that make sense?
It's an expenditure. It doesn't, it's not a revenue stream. It's assuming that we provide the device for every student.
Correct. Correct, you can assign fees to it to cover some of it, yeah, you're right.
So let me get this straight. So the pilot group, you're calling up here, was the one grade level, whatever that might be.
That was just kind of the, what it costs.
One grade level. All right, so then you've got two grade levels, you've got six and nine. Then you've got four grade levels, six, nine, 11, and 12. Where's 10?
Well, by that, every year moves up a year. Every year moves up a year. So they already have it, so then this year, I'm giving it to six and nine if I started at nine. So now, in that second year, six, nine, and 10 have it. And then this year, six and nine get it again, and then 11 and 12 will be to finish it out. And then we go back and grab three, four, five. Does that make any sense?
All right, and.
It makes sense when you do it.
Yeah, and so I guess maybe I'm getting a little ahead of myself here, but the thinking would be to start at what grade level?
I don't know. That's what I mean.
Part of what the fifth.
Six or nine is probably, you want? Freshmen? I wasn't going to say anybody. Kidergarten, let's start young, no, I'm kidding. It's a, yeah, I mean, originally, I had done this either to start at a middle school or a high school. You know, not even figured into this is how long do the devices last? And I don't really want to get into too much, but Chromebooks will probably last a really good two years. And then a really bad third year, so you got to buy it again. I mean, it becomes a, you know, there's a lot more planning to this. This is just an expenditure right now. If you wanted to, you know, to hand the devices out or follow a plan similar to this, it's about the revenues, I think it's.
We would, we would target a grade six or nine probably as the initial grade levels because that's an entry level to the way our buildings are structured. And then we could build a professional development at the middle level, the high level. And then, you know, then they're, they're set. And we just have the teachers to come moving forward, you know, if the kids are good. That makes sense.
It's like freshman college, you know. And you hear that same laptop for years.
And then again, just go back to where we started. Again, I'll put the red up. The red signifies we're not ready for that yet, but to get there, you know, we really want to increase student learning engagement. We do have to consider how fast we do this. If someone dropped $5 million on our doorstep tomorrow, are we going to hand out? No, I don't know even say it. No, we're not going to. We need too much on the front end. That's what this year or so of planning and stuff really gives to a committee to say, here's where we think we're going to be ready. Jim, you and I heard at Lyden, they did 32 hours of PD for every teacher before they went to it. I mean, that's an astronomical number when you think about it. How do we get that so that they are ready? That they change the way they teach, that they change the way they meet with the kids? But a couple of things that are, you know, do have a big financial piece to it. A robust and reliable infrastructure. Again, how do we keep that? And it's not just filling in the gaps with the access points. Because again, in two or three years, we're going to need to look at as an overall. So we have to have a plan for that. We can't, you know, these access points we use now use some old technology that three years ago was considered new. We have to have a plan to upgrade those as we go. And then, you know, the big thing responsible and sustainable. I can't go over and up how much sustainable. It's 700 every, it's about 700 every year. Not as an increase because every year it'll fall off, but it's, we have to figure out where the revenues come from. So that leads me to the, like, we haven't been having to report this stuff. I think that'll be done in 30 minutes.
We've already dipped into this a little bit here. The bottom line is the timeline's got to be flexible, based on the factors we've talked about. Based on resources, based on capacity of the organization, based on, you know, range of factors. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, when you said a Chrome might just last two, three years, if a freshman gets it and by junior senior year, they need a new one, then how do we pay for that?
Yeah, and that's where, I gotta wait a while. My own joke. The, I can tell you from three of the districts that have done this, the middle school gets one, they keep it for three years. A lot, a lot of them might not go home in the beginning. And when they get to the high schools, they get one in ninth and one in 11, if it's Chrome.
Why is, and Chrome is the better choice versus, is there some reason Chrome doesn't last as long as?
No, it's just, it's a less expensive device. And it's not that it's going to break. I mean, just like anything else, your cell phone batteries go after a while. You want a new cell phone battery or a new phone after a year because it doesn't hold its charge? We can't, Chromebooks start with an eight-hour battery life. And my dad mine for over a year and it's still pretty good. But after that second year, those things start to fail. You end up spending more money keeping them up than you do if you have a fee structure or some other type of thing where the device becomes the students and they can either give it to a family member or whatever. You recoup them and resell them, and then they get another one. Again, and that aspect of focus is on making sure they have the tool that they need. We even know most of our three-year-old laptops start to struggle. We're buying, we're at the end of our second year with that first round of laptops we bought, we had to get seven batteries this week. Things that are used heavily, and these will be, just have normal wear and tear. And I don't want to call the throwaways society, but, and there are some Chromebooks that are a little bit higher quality and all that, but you then change the price point. You really change the price point when, if you can build it out with the structure, and many of the districts have figured out ways to make it work where it's a shared responsibility and, you know, a student might get one or two in their tenure here.
That feeds in exactly to that revenue strategy. I mean, that's something that I believe as a staff and as a board, we have to talk about. You know, what is that strategy? A lot of, some districts have the resources, they build it in their budget, they pay for it all. Some districts have a blended, you know, scenario where they have a combination of student fees, district allocation, and some other type of capital resource, okay? Other districts, it's all student, you know, fees. Student, you just add it to the fee bill. Mr. Brown and I were talking about that today. He says he can't wait for the data. Just say, put it on the supply list. Now, we said, you know, we're not at that point, but at some point, probably in the not-so-near-future, that will be part of it. But that'll just be on the supply list. We're not there today, and all districts aren't doing that. But, you know, some districts, their strategy is that it's a $300 cost. They do payment plans, they work with them, you got to pay nine bucks a month over a 10-month period, things like that. That's the revenue strategy. We have to have more conversation about what's going to be best for district to handle. Okay, so that's, that's what we're talking about here. It's a great question. And that's going to influence the cycle period, whether it's two years, three years, whatever it may be. And we have to figure that out on how we're going to build in, you know, that revenue strategy to support what we need to do.
Yeah, you're right. Tonight's the numbers question. I just have one question on the 2014, 2015 slide again, so I. Because you made mention that the items on this are already in the, are plugged in and anticipated for 2014, 15. What's that number?
It would be whatever my current budget is now minus, minus the cut I have to make because of the 1.3 million. I'm not going to, I don't, I don't hold a grudge against that at all.
It's not much.
This actually, right now, could mostly happen because of the money that was found, was a CPRT last year that was given to that room, essentially added to the budget. So even taking that back, that extra cushion is enough with what I have left over from other things falling off, you know, one-time expenses from last year, that will cover those laptops. That was going to be revenue, but I didn't really want to push it back a third year because that's really the big expense that's coming this year. The rest of the stuff is kind of things that are already in the works or, you know, part of a revenue stream in some way, shape, or form.
Jim, it's approximately $2 million. I don't know where the exact number, right Bill? It hit around $2 million. That's what our budget's been in the IT budget, and that's about what it'll be. Again, as Rod said, some things are falling off that we've done before, so therefore, we've got, we don't have a new lease coming on.
We did the Sonic Wall firewall last year. We did a couple of one-time expenses that we purchased last year. We won't have a new laptop lease, and then the, again, the extra money with CPRT, even with, even having to cut some with the 1.3 million, there's the, I have enough to fund the 612 laptops for classroom teachers.
So this is budget neutral.
This is budget neutral.
We're trying to balance, you know, a lot of things here.
A lot of things.
Yeah, yeah.
Exact figures, I don't know yet, but I, I mean, it's enough, I know that.
Just.
Go ahead. Okay, the, this presentation, again, kind of going back where I said before, the, I don't know what slide it is, it's got the 700,000, one-grade level implement cost. Again, that, you know, that's still a little confusing. I think Brad started alluding to it, that these are not repetitive year after year. This is somewhat of a startup, I guess. We need to know eventually what the ongoing cost would be. Again, if we don't have those in there, again, that's part of that ongoing budget cost. You know, again, we're not going to buy $300,000 of Chromebooks every year. This is, this would.
No, we won't. Every year, we would buy. We have a new sixth grade every single year.
Yeah, but not 13 times.
You've been on the grade levels.
Well, okay, those say we want full-blown, 13-grade levels. This is not a total cost per year.
Yes, it isn't. Every year, you have a new kindergarten, and we don't get the devices back, and they're not being leased.
Okay, so we'll put that in perspective, what you're saying. So I'm going to have $300,000 of Chromebooks times 13 every year.
No, no, once, one time, one time, 700, once a year.
That's my point.
700 is, yeah.
Exactly. So that, you know, I understand the 700 and so on, but then we need these other things. We're going to need technical support, we're going to need instructional coaches, et cetera, at the other, you know, while the other grade levels, and those are ongoing.
Correct.
So I, I think we need to understand the ongoing versus the acquisition costs.
I think the ongoing would be the device cost, 300,000 or 500,000 every year after that. The other costs would already be figured into the budget the way they are. Because that would be the staffing, and they'd be there. We'd already have them all built out what we needed here. You'll see how these numbers kind of go up and down and they don't, because I dropped off one or two.
So we need.
Instructional coaches. I dropped off one or two technical support. And I have this whole thing broken down, but it's like 14.
That's right.
It's a lot longer, so.
We're saying on the annualized basis, then we need to find 5,4 of revenue, or two, of some way to pay 5,4 annually. Is that what you're saying?
No, here's what it's.
That's my point.
Here's what it would be, I mean, I can answer that. It would be, if we had three grade levels that we, on, once we got everything in place, okay, five years down the road, then the annual expense to maintain this sequence would be about 1.5 million dollars because we'd have three grade levels. And I'm assuming it'd be one grade level of each level, one at the elementary, one at the middle, one at the high school, approximately. It'd be about 500,000, so it's about 1.5 million a year. I'm estimating here, but that's, I believe that's what you're asking. So.
That's all grades.
Well, that would maintain us so the cycle would go through every year.
For 15 grades.
That's correct. So it'd be about 1.5 to 2 million dollars. I mean, it's, it's a range there, but that would be an ongoing increase in the annual budget, you know, regardless of the revenue source in the IT part. So currently, it's 2 million. We'd probably be looking at a 3.5 million dollar annual budget in the IT budget to maintain this type of solution over a period of time.
That's assuming the devices go away. Like, right now, we, I recoup money because everything is leased. So when something falls off, something comes back. These are, we're not going to want these back. They're going to have stickers and hooey stuff on them and, you know, I mean, it's just, this type of a device even I, becomes a very personal item. And it's not something you need to bring back, and no one else wants somebody else's personal. Essentially, you could lease them and sell them at the end and then not have that full fund, but yes.
So 1.5 then would be a number that we would kind of look at on an annualized basis for 13 grades, if I'm hearing that correctly.
Once we got past the startup.
Yeah, right. So we need a, an initial startup cost, which is somewhere approximately, what, 7.5 million? 4.5 million?
Uh, depends on if you, again, I, and again, you, iPad at the elementary and Chromebook at the upper. You're going to have.
So 5.4 initial cost.
5.4 is 7.4.
Well, yeah, then that's based on the device type.
Right, so 5.4 to 7.4.
Great. So, and then, once that's in place, though, that's now this initial, then we're looking at 1.5 annually. I mean, that's a lot more acceptable. Now, one of the other thing that I believe is that we saw at Lyden was there, you know, a lot of the techs, we'll call it, that are in that budget of 1.5 were really students. They became student-based, not, not paid staff.
Correct, they had a class that they taught, somewhere it was done here, yes.
Some substantial savings in that 1.5 based on that.
Could be.
Yeah, I mean, it was.
That's at the high school level. That's a high school district, high school level, high school issues.
That's four grades of eight people at 300,000.
But K8, that'll never be a solution that will work at those levels, okay? We would be able to get some support at the high, at our two high schools. Out of our 20 buildings, that's two buildings. So, I mean, that is correct. You're right.
I just think we need to drill down, you know, Nathan, two printers to me. Printers, you know, I, if we're going to, where we're going here is cloud and all this stuff. You know, we don't need printers anymore. So, you know, you know, again, there's, I think there's some slop in the, I just, I think there's a lot of overflow of dollars that I think we really need to tighten it up, you know, to get some real better understanding of some of the numbers here because that, you know, really hardcore, these are the world we're going to base our decisions on. And then I think that gives us the ability to say, you know, where do we raise the money to buy that initial output? How is that going to be done? You know, but, you know, I think, again, I'd like to have a little more drilling down on some of these pieces as we go forward and make some, what I call, very critical decisions I'm moving forward with what I believe we must do.
Mr. Roman?
I agree with Jim. There would probably need more hard numbers here, but I'd be reluctant to refine them too much. We've heard over, we've heard over and over again how we need to restore trust in the community. What I would think of doing more than anything to impair the trust we want to build is to make some prediction that's going to be 1.5 million and then through some, some means it gets to be 2 million or 2.2 million. And so I, I always would prefer to be somewhat conservative, so that we give ourselves some flexibility and not fine-tune this so much that then we can be accused of misleading the public on the true cost of this thing. So, um, I agree with you, Jim, that we need to refine the cost, but we need to be careful. We can't say it's going to be 1.5 million. I think we're better saying it's going to be 1.5 to 2 million dollars in annual cost. We may have a mixture of devices up here because we want the devices to last a little bit longer at the high school level. So that's one bit of caution. Then I would assume that, correct me if I'm wrong here, Rob, that perhaps a more expensive device may last another year or two longer than the Chromebook, is that what I've heard here?
It could. I mean, it could still even be a more expensive Chromebook. There are like seven levels. There's a 1,900 dollar Chromebook.
That's the sort of trade-off that the FIT committee needs to really analyze and then come back to the board with some recommendations on.
And that's why I think our plan was, was to have something, you know, this is the, and this is kind of the beginning discussion to say, we have a revenue problem. And we really do, to make this happen. So to spend too much time on it and actually not knowing yet what we're going to get out of FIT was kind of, you know, preliminary. But these are fairly good figures. You're right, it could be off a couple hundred thousand here or there, but it's, this wasn't for shock value, but it's not easy at District 13,000 to, to really get to where we're going to without revenue and a plan, um, you know, to get that revenue. It's not there. We're not going to get it out of NIF one time in schools for paper money and stuff like that. You know, the issue on printers, the printer solution is probably looking at a 12 to 1 printer ratio. Turn the camera off. That's one printer for every 12 we have. Now, we have some offices in the SSC with four printers, so I mean, that's good.
I am not.
I'm good, I, I think everyone in this room doesn't have one, but the other offices all have like five. No, but across the district, if we were to go into a 12 to 1 ratio, we still do need printers, but getting more multifunctional, cost less. You know, a 12 to 1 ratio when we have 900 printers coming down, the energy cost alone is 100,000 dollars a year by unplugging 780 printers. There's ways to save money there and to, you know, recoup it. You're right, we don't want to put money in printers, but we're looking at solutions to do those kinds of things. So, um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big plan to try to figure a lot of things out and it's hard to do it when I'm looking at the 2.2 million dollar budget. It's hard to, all I see is the rent too. I can't do this, I can't do this, I can't do this. We have to keep the things we have running now. So the new stuff, we have to find a way to cover it.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I was just going to say, I'm kind of halfway between the two gems, Mr. Manson and Mr. Roman, in terms of looking at the numbers. On the one hand, I do, I do agree with what you're saying, that at this stage of the game, it should be more of a ballpark. But on the other hand, I think that if you overestimate and then it turns out that there are economies other places that allow you to do it, that tends to leave a message that you're constantly trying to shock your public into needing more revenue that also isn't good. So from a trust standpoint, I, I guess from that standpoint of things, I'd be more interested in the FIT committee. Who is on that and are their parents on it? And I know we're doing the Engage 200, so we're expecting to hear some, you know, something back from people perhaps in terms of, uh, you know, interest in getting involved in things. But from my point of view, it's never too soon if we're looking at something like this, where we're possibly going to be going out to the community and maybe asking them for more revenue or going to the PTAs and saying, will you buy our Chromebooks from now and forever? Or however it is we think we're going to do it, to start getting those community people involved in some of those discussions so that they understand and can start answering questions from other people who are going to say all of the same things that, you know, we say here tonight.
And...
Go ahead.
I'm going to waste my time again. I have to answer a question about the FIT committee. If FIT committee does not have parents on it, it is not making these decisions. It is guiding what needs to happen in a classroom for a digital learning environment. It's not really saying, you guys need to now go get one-on-one for everybody either. That's not the charge of the FIT committee. It's about the learning environment.
Well, but, but you, you indicated that the FIT committee would be the one that would be creating this recommendation and strategy. So if they're the ones coming up with it, then maybe this year they haven't talked about it, but eventually. Am I misunderstanding? I, I thought that was the understanding.
What the FIT committee has been really working on is what should instruction look like to be able to meet those? And there's a lot of things that are, can be linked to tech to really help us do that. There's just other stuff of just what the understanding of what that would be. We really felt it was important to think about what you need to build before we pick out what tools we need. So, you know, what that looks like. So we haven't spent time even saying, well, how would you want to go one-to-one? Because it might look, we might not have any funding to even be thinking about that as a possibility. And we don't want to spend a whole lot of time talking about when we want to go one-to-one if there's no chance that, you know, that that's... Because there are lots of things you can do on instruction without one-to-one. If we look like that this is a possibility, then that group can start thinking about that or coming up with that plan. And definitely parents would need to be part of that. Right now, it's really thinking about how do we move staff's paradigms of what instruction looks like and how to get that out there. And that has to happen first before we give them all our devices. So we could be doing that part eventually. We haven't taken the group there at all because of this mind shift that needs to happen about what instruction is and because of the price tag that goes along with some of the tech. You know, and get everybody like, well, how are we going to do this? And there may be no chance that we're...
So what I'm hearing is that, first of all, this is, this, you gave us an update and you told us where we were and where you plan to take us. And I think that has to be the basis of any kind of number. So I appreciate that you gave us the what. And, and, and then, and that I really find is what we need to do. We need to have that understanding before we could put a dollar figure on it. Then as I read your, your projections for one-on-one, those are strictly for the one-on-one component. And what you gave us in the first chart was the first-year pilot. And then what you gave us in the second chart was basically cost scenarios over the five-year implementation.
Finish it, right, yeah.
So, and that's strictly for one-to-one.
Correct.
So, so those aren't really budget figures. Those are just the one-to-one scenario if we implemented it in a couple of different ways. And I, I wouldn't expect, since that whole process isn't even going to start until 15, 16, that we would want to go to hard figures. Because the Chromebook that costs 300 dollars today might cost 500 dollars in 15, 16, let me go to purchase that. Or they may cost 150 dollars. So to say today that we could come up with a hard budget figure, to me, isn't, isn't going to really help us with the trust factor, you know, either way. All, all we're saying is these are orders of magnitude cost differences or cost estimates to implement a one-to-one strategy. So, having said that, um, the other thing I'm hearing is, is that community input is very, very important to this process. And, and maybe we're not ready for that just yet.
I agree.
Is, is what I think I'm hearing you and Mrs. Doc was saying.
Like on the end of the discussion, how do you want us to seek that after we have? Because we have, again, you're right, we don't have hard numbers. We have very, here's about what it's going to cost. This is, and again, it is hard to look past, it's a huge hurdle for us to look past, but that's where we, you know, it's a flexible. Give us the date, when are we going to start it? We'll have to figure out a way, but revenue has to come with that date whenever we say we're going to start it. And then how do we get the community's support around that? And I think part of that is we haven't seen what community engagement for brought back yet, at least I haven't seen.
Or, or what we can do, and I, I'm kind of figuring out a time, not a timeline, but sort of a process. So maybe once the FIT committee has its recommendation in terms of technology and technological strategy, instructional strategy, then maybe after that is concluded, then we kick off a community, uh, participation committee that involves picking the devices, how we're, and deciding how we're going to pay for them. Because a parent may step up and say, I'll pay for my student's ninth grade, my ninth grade student's Chromebook because he'll keep it and he'll, you know, and he'll use it all for years and it's his and blah, blah, blah. I don't know. I, I'm just saying maybe that is a strategy. And then I think parental input, community input is important to have that, you know, for that piece of it. So that's kind of what I'm hearing as, as a result of, of your presentation tonight and, and where we need to go. But go ahead.
Barb, I think you're spot on on this. And it's a great summary and I don't want to repeat what you said, but the bottom line is, and this is to answer Rosemary's question as well. There's a couple of different ways we can involve the community, parents, whoever we need to involve. One of them would be to have some form of the FIT committee, maybe do a subcommittee with parents and, and guide that discussion and get that feedback. Another option is, you know, we are going to get some feedback from the, our large-scale engagement. However, we know one of the outcomes of this community engagement is, is the process, how we get community input on any topic. So we might say, hey, in November, we're ready as a staff or as a board. And we say, okay, we have a topic here, a one-to-one strategy. We've put together some ideas here. Let's get a focus group together one night. We're going to share this. We're going to get some feedback. Please, everybody come. You know, we'll, we'll target groups. We'll try to get people to come. We're going to open to the community. I mean, that's just, that is a strategy movement for, that is one of the intents of the whole community engagement process we've been going through. Is to set up a structure. How does District 200 get feedback from the community? It could be on this. It could be on a facility solution. It could be on any topic that we've put out there thus far. But this is big enough that it probably warrants, you know, some type of a larger-scale presentation and say, what do you guys think? Can you buy into this? Whatever we see. We might put out a couple of revenue solutions to them and say, which one makes sense? Is it a fee structure? Should we, you know, what should we do? Should we allocate district dollars to support all this? Whatever the case may be. So you're, you're right on target. That's what, you know, the three things here. I don't expect this all to end tonight. This is probably going to be ongoing for the next six months. Uh, we would anticipate, when Rod and I were talking today, you know, to bring back to the board in the fall some type of a solution that we're talking about, you know, for that subsequent year. We wouldn't wait till next February or March. I mean, it's got to, this has got to be probably an October conversation, maybe November conversation at the board level to where we're at and where we're headed with, with these, especially those red areas that we don't have revenue for. If we are going to move forward on those in that, that 15, 16, and 17, 18, it's going to be.
I, I agree with that, Dr. Harris. At the last community engagement session, what we heard from the 40 tables, 60 tables we had about technology, what's up with it, we need to improve our infrastructure. And Rod, you said at the beginning of your presentation, what that means differs from person to person. And for everybody to get on the same page as to what that means, they'd have to sit through an hour and a half presentation like we did tonight.
Two hours, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure we're all on the same page necessarily, but I think we're closer to understanding what we need in the broad sense. So I think in some respects, what I heard from that community engagement session, at least with respect to technology, is that we need to step up and educate the public about exactly where we are and what our experts think we should do for the 21st century classroom. What makes sense teaching and curriculum. And that is an ongoing discussion, an ongoing engagement with some, some portion of the public that has to be known.
Adding on to that, Jim, is, and I know we've had some discussion about the benefits of one-on-one and when we were at that Lyons School that, that, um, so I guess I just need to hear more and I think definitely the community would, is what is our other districts, who is the first to have done it? What's the track history and, um, how does it help education? You know, I think, do we have any history of it? To be pushing something or worrying about? I mean, I think at the end of the day, someday it is going to be just norm for all schools. There's no question in that. But when we jump in, just, I'd like to know how it's been made. And in your budget, the teachers getting laptops, are theirs going to be lasting four or five years and do we budget that?
Yeah, theirs is not a Chromebook. It's an actual laptop, laptop, and it's, I don't want to say it's souped up, but price of breakable laptops have come down and we're building them with not hard drives. We're going to have SSD drives so they last longer. They don't get hot anymore. They don't have moving parts. The things that, they have chick lit keys so they don't break off. I mean, we've really kind of worn and tear what we've done and realized we better get something a little different. The price point is about a little bit less than what we pay for the student one. And it's actually a nicer machine now, but it's meant for an individual, not for the revenue miss of the ones that the student, so. Theirs will last, you know, we'll lease those for three years. So every three years, that's a new one. Lease or purchase, give every three, yeah. Right now I have it in the purchase, but we might move it into lease, you know, with the next set.
I can just imagine a parent saying, well, what happens if my kid loses it? So it's...
Well, those are for, yeah, not for Chromebooks. Those are for the teachers.
No, but if, I'm back to the Chromebook now.
There's insurance was included in that. It costs at 85 dollars, yeah. They'll have to pay the deductible most likely, but there's insurance for that.
Well, I, I don't want the evening to end without sharing what I learned in NSBA, but, but before we do that, I did want to clarify. Although I agree with the business of needing more time to talk to the community in more detail, the fact remains that we have an Engage 200 session on finances coming up. And if we're really wanting from these, all, all these Engage 200 sessions to get some feel as to where the community goes, it seems to me we have to include some, something in there to give the community an idea, as you put it, of the order and magnitude as to what it would be. So is, is that part of the plan that we're going to say to the community if we go to one-on-one? Likelihood is it's going to cost about 1.5 million dollars a year to sustain, you know? How, is, is that going to be part of it? I guess is my question.
Not that specific. However, you know, we have not finalized the work activity yet. We were just working on that yesterday, trying to determine what the work activity actually will look like. Uh, what I believe it to be. Uh, and we'll know more after, uh, next week, next Monday, when we meet with the facilitating team. Uh, we will ask the community to prioritize, uh, spending. In other words, where would the community prioritize spending? Would it be on technology? Would it be on, um, you know, additional staff or student support? Would it be on, um, facility enhancement? You know, we've rolled a lot of things out over those past four months. This is one of them. You know, we have not finalized that yet. Our thinking was that we were going to ask them to prioritize, ask the board to feedback. How would you prioritize expenditures moving forward in your budget planning and in your expenditure cycle? That was our thinking. Uh, we were not going to get this specific on this topic at this point, but ask the general picture about priorities. So certainly we haven't finalized that yet, but we can.
Well, I, I would just say if we're going to ask them to prioritize things, then I think we have to give them some idea of the relative amount. It doesn't have to be a dollar amount, but in other words, the fact that this might be two times more expensive if that's their priority than, let's say, VTEA sports, that's a priority. So, so they've got to have some idea of what the relative values of all these things are that they're prioritizing. If not in dollars, just in units, you know, this is twice as expensive. This is three times expensive. You can spend 10 units. Where do you want to spend it? Let's say. Just my feeling, because otherwise I think it's a false question. Because then they're all going to say, oh, sure, we want that and we want VTEA sports number two. Guess what? We spent 1.1 million dollars.
You're right.
Go ahead, Mr..
So just first off, I'd like the, so getting that feeling of, I'm only intended. We've got a three-year integrated plan and I appreciate the fact that it's just not technology, but it has all the different components of it beyond just the device. So I like the fact there's professional development and there are other infrastructure, software elements. I like that. I think we need to remember that this, this thing we've been zeroing on recently, this one-to-one preliminary budget projection is really just one component of that three-year technology plan. It's not, I'm going to be sure, we're not, this is not the projected cost for the full tech. This is just a couple of individual line items. So we start, we start using the word one and a half million dollars a year for our technology plan. That's very...
Fantastic. Well, we have, things are falling off. And again, this is the expenditure side of it, revenue side of it.
Expenditure.
And I'm in a finance department, I should think I'd know that, but, um, we still have things, again, like leases would fall off. We have other, you know, the tech budget's still there and what falls off is going, that's, that has to be part of the bigger, but we don't know what that is yet. If we don't have a plan on when to do it, I can't say, let's, it's maybe desktop refresh. I mean, does that make sense? A has to happen before we can say B happens, so I don't know if I save that money until A happens. It's confused myself, so it's been...
No, I'm pretty sure. Just, and just one thing, just an observation of the, what looks like a, if, within the one-to-one scenario, it looks like a four-year plan shows that every student across 10 grade levels got advice. It's 10, it's 10, it's, just as a, just as a point, I think that's very aggressive. Probably, we believe it to that point. I happen to have a report from one of my clients that was presented at a board meeting last night. A high school, they've got, after three years, 55% of their high school students have iPads. So it's almost, I mean, you start talking about these cost projections, that's like super aggressive compared to more methodical structured approach.
So Latoya proved last night they're doing three through, they're doing all 612 next year, 3500 the following. Now, they're a small, a little smaller district, but their first year was 3,700. All middle and high school.
Timeline points out, as, you know, it can't be...
That's just ours.
We, staff have to balance the capacity of the organization to handle the systemic change. We also have to have a sustainable revenue and, you know, resources to be able to maintain. So it's, it's all... So it's, it's all these things that have to play into this, you're absolutely right.
There's fourteen paths to get there, I mean, that's probably the easiest way to say it, it's just finding which one works for this organization.
We put up a possible scenario, not sure, we would hope maybe next fall, then, we'd have a better sense on what that time, it may be a six-year timeline, in a unit district like ours, you know, it might be. High school districts sometimes take six years, you know, only four grade levels, you know, they, they, you know, depending on the capacity of the organization, and we may have to break this out further once we get in, further into it, especially in the pedagogy and curriculum side of things, to, you know, to make sure it makes sense out over time. Work with staff, gotta make sure they are able to handle this as we move forward, it's a concern, and we said that right up front, and, you know, that's just where we're at. And that, keyword, possible scenario, with those five years scenario.
Since you, Erica, bless her heart, how capable, to bring up your presentation at student achievement, well, you did mention, in my faith, that the one-to-one device would be about seventy million thousand dollars, one grade level, and then, at the end of that, for the tasks, we asked, as you all remember, people to allocate a dollar among the various subcategories of efforts we could have on student achievement, and expanding digital learning environment came in third at twenty-five cents. Number one was provide interventions for students at thirty-four cents, and two was increase professional development at twenty-nine cents, that part of increasing professional development is also part of the digital cost, but I don't know how all this plays, keep that in mind when it's appearing for next, the next presentation, we've already shared some of this information, and it's part of the feedback that we've gotten already. Thank you.
Okay, just to follow up on a couple of things here, I think there's a point in time, we're gonna be compared, our community's gonna be compared to other communities, whether it's Potavia, whether it's the entity that Brad just mentioned, or whatever, but I'd, I'd like to have some understanding of what surrounding communities are doing, what their goals are. I think also, we have to have the, what I call, our mission as a board is to have a term plan, and we have to come up with our best guess of numbers, our best estimate of numbers, we cannot be thrown out a million one, or a million five, or seven hundred thousand, and then have the community support that. We ultimately have to say that we have this best information available to us, is gonna say, call for this demand. So, you know, and again, to say that the million fires right or wrong, that's not the issue, the issue is we have to go to the community, explain to them where we're at, we have to be competitive with the surrounding community, and we have to, ultimately, the board's gotta make a decision, I don't care if there's fourteen paths or eighty-five paths, sooner or later, we've gotta say, this is the path we're gonna follow, and that path has gotta be communicated to the, to the community, and the community then has to ultimately say, that's acceptable or not, and then we fund it, then we have to go and fund it, but, you know, I think we, we keep dodging what I call the hard decisions here, and, and I, I think we are at that point, I heard in the community engagement program, which again, I'm not sure that, whatever, two or three hundred people was enough to make that decision at this point, but I kept hearing that that was a high priority, technology, I gotta believe, as just mentioned by Joanne, we are gonna be there one day, whether it's one-on-one or not, I don't know, but the point is that we have to put in place a plan that really does this, and so we can go to the community and say, this is what we can afford now, this is where I think we need to be, and let's get those costs, we have to say, what do we do, how do we solve that? Some districts have more money than we do, okay? Some districts may get lesser state aid reductions than we are looking at, based on some articles I read lately, but again, that's what we have to do, that's our mission as a board, to plan these out, come up with the best information we have available, and make some decisions, you know, with all the guidance that's available.
With all due respect, Mr. Madison, I don't think anybody around this table disagrees with you. I think, I think what, what we've heard tonight is a plan, but it has a lot of challenges in it, and I think, from what I understood, Mrs. Dahlquist and Mr. Mack saying, is they're, they're in concert, they're talking about, with, with their work on the FIT committee, they're talking about coming up with a concrete proposal as to how we need to proceed with technology, integrating the technology with the pedagogy. And I guess my question for the two of you then would be, when do you think this, this FIT committee will be ready to say, okay, here's what we should do, and here's what it's gonna cost?
All right, well, I don't know if I'm gonna speak in concert with Rod and Dr. Harris, but I guess, if you're planning for an event, you're, you're planning to do something, it's really helpful to have a ballpark of what kind of budget you're talking about, and as I said through the community engagement, and I'm like, okay, well, we have building facility needs, we have people who said, you know, we really want more interventions for students, we have just modernizing the classrooms that need to happen, that are outside of, of one-to-one, I, you know, my father was a school business manager, and I'm looking at the budget going, and we're cutting for next year based on what we're bringing in that don't include any of these things. So, what, what piece of the pie, or what new revenue sources, or it, it's, it's kind of difficult to say, go build a plan, like when I redesign a kitchen, okay, what's your, what's your budget? And if there's no budget, then I better be figuring out how I'm gonna make do with my own kitchen.
Well, I, I understand that, but we do have this, this FIT committee work and one-on-one planning that's gonna go on next year.
Well, and I, again, I think I said this earlier too, I think the FIT committee is really, and again, we even talked about this last time with them, their planning for instruction is that there might not be any change, but also might be able to comment how it would be different if there was five extra devices in a room, packets of ten, or a one-on-one. I don't know if our plan looks like that, then. Here's the scenario, we need to get to ten devices in every room, we need to get to one-on-one, then we have options, I don't know if that's a, I, we were planning, we, the conversation happened last time, how do we plan this, when they all were, there's, it's not coming anyway, so where are we gonna plan? Trust me, they wanna plan for one-on-one, but it's the, we're gonna plan for the one room that's there now, you can still change instruction, you can change how you teach with what we have now, it's just, is it what's best for our kids, is it what's best for getting them ready, no, not at all. So, I, I think the plan will probably look, you know, kinda like we were doing with the laptop, sort of stage them up until we have, you know, enough to, to use, but it, it's a, it will have a couple different options on how we get there.
Let me comment too, you know, the, the, this committee is probably ongoing to me, it's not a task, or it's not one and done, this, through the five years, this is gonna be an ongoing conversation, because as the, we didn't even know what the Google apps were three years ago, they didn't even exist, so this committee's gonna have to continue to monitor that instructional component as we move forward. Now, what, what I would anticipate, what we had talked about at the senior level, was to, I had this discussion tonight, we would continue to work with the different pieces, we got the community thing going on, we got a lot of data points coming in, okay, a lot, staff side, community side, state of Illinois, you know, local, the economy, all types of things playing into this. I would anticipate in the fall, I said this before, that we would come back with some type of a very targeted, very explicit, you know, what can the organization handle, what can the budget provide, and a revenue strategy based on these feedback that's gonna continue over the next six months, to what we believe we can do over a period of time. That's what I would anticipate, but I wanted to start the conversation, see, whether, and have the board react to, you know, some targets, and see where we're at. We still have a lot of input, we have a report coming from the community in July, at the July board meeting, I think it would not be wise to lay something out right now, until we get that report, along with maybe some other pieces, and then move forward. So that's our intent, at least based on, you know, what's what we were talking about today, yesterday, the day before, and that we will anticipate coming back in the fall with a much more detailed, take a look at what the other districts have done, we know, but we'll put it into a, you know, summarized, you know, solution, 'cause now our district's looking the same, they're not, they're, they're kinda taking different, you know, depends on the revenue, depends on their timeline, depends on the capacity of their staff, it depends on all range of things, and we're kinda, you know, we're in our own scenario right now, and we have to manage all those things, but that's what I would anticipate, coming back in the fall with, with a targeted plan that we would build into our budget then, for the fifteen, sixteen years moving forward. We would put those into our financial projections in January, when Bill stands up and says, okay, here's what it's looking, we build those in there, and, and whether, and with the revenue stream, whatever, whatever we suggest is gonna be there, and, and show how we can make this work.
And then, Rod, would you anticipate, let's say, you do that, and you conclude based upon your, your projections we have for revenue stream, that we simply cannot find it, say, under that revenue stream, a one-on-one strategy, would that report then say, however, the board and the community do want to finance a one-on-one strategy, this is what it's gonna cost, above and beyond what our revenue projections are, and there are certain benefits to, a number of benefits to a one-on-one strategy, and that's what it is, but based upon what we know six months from now, and the revenue stream that we have, this is what we can afford to do in, in, you have the best week, the digital asset we can buy, and what we believe is appropriate for our curriculum and pedagogy and implement, basically on our revenue stream, you know, for us to take that next step up, this is what we're gonna need in addition to that, and the board, we're just gonna have to think and rule together, see where we can get that extra revenue, in fact, that's what we need.
Absolutely. The other thing, we might, we may not come back with a one-on-one, we may come back saying, you know what, we believe, technical wise, we can do it in a ten-per-classroom center, I, I don't know, that's another, you know, that's another point, maybe that's what we believe is best for District Two Hundred, maybe not in every classroom, maybe at certain levels, maybe at elementary level, we don't think a one-to-one solution's appropriate. You know, there's, districts having that conversation, maybe a ten, you know, laptop of, or card of ten in, in an elementary classroom is very appropriate for us and our kids. We don't, maybe six-twelve's where we would go, have a different solution, you know, we don't, we're not there today, and I think, what we will, we can be and will be in the fall with price points, budget planning, projections, and a revenue strategy to support whatever we end up.
Just one more quick, and I, to repeat myself, but totally, we could get excited, and the community get excited, if other districts across the country can say, oh my gosh, this has made such a difference, you know, it's, there has to be a history of it somewhere, and you'd think Google, since they would wanna sell all the Chromebooks, would be compiling, you know, giving the best feedback, but, I mean, that's the key thing, that no, is it doesn't make a difference, and our, we, North High School did that specifically, and they didn't think it was maybe needed, so, I just, I'd love some harder history.
I think most of the districts that have, that, I mean, I hate to say this, you wanna be a risk to take your bullet, for those that went out first, and the easiest way to say those that went out first, the ones that handed the devices first before the planning and the P E and changing pedagogy, you, you will hear that it didn't work correctly. I was in a district that had a one-on-one school, it didn't work correctly, it happened before I got there, so it wasn't a bad decision to bring here. You know, it's like, if you live with the, you find out later, oh, they handed it out and tried to do everything alongside, and you can't change the, I don't know, it's a prudishism, you can't change the wheels on the truck when it's driving down the highway or something like that.
Tires aren't good.
You can't do that, I mean, that was one of those things, but the schools that have gone in the last couple of years, I mean, I think you will see light, who did huge planning in front is, very, really thinks it has changed the way that they're communicating with kids and they're getting things done, so, and not to say the slow approach is the best, but I think the way we're approaching it and making sure it is best, and the organization's ready, and we'll have the instructional practices ready in the classrooms, and then the devices come, you're not gonna have a lot of people that said this was a waste.
Can I, this, that's actually a very good segue, if you allow me to just share briefly what I heard at NSBA. I, I went to a session, which turned out to be the best session that I went to, and it was from a fellow school district in Illinois, High School Township Two Fourteen, and it really, they were struggling with all, many of the same things that we were talking about tonight, and they took an approach that was very effective for them, there is certainly no one right size fit up, fits all, and heard some aspects of what they did, and, you know, what was being said tonight, so I think it's one of these things where, as Joanne likes to say, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but we can perhaps pick and choose parts, different model parts from different places, whole metaphor here. High school, and what really picked up my ears was that High School Township Two Fourteen, it's a high school district, but many of the demographics about it are the same as ours, they have about twelve thousand students, oh, and to tell you, it's Buffalo Grove, Elk Grove, Prospect, Rolling Meadows, Wheeling, and John Harsey High School, so there's six buildings, and it doesn't sound like they all agree, so there's, there's something, I mean, that's a good thing, because we've got, you know, several buildings to contend with also. They have twelve thousand students, they see the same shift in diversity that we had over the past number of years, they have sixty-seven languages in their district, they have twenty-six percent low income, so all those things that might argue for difficulties of differentiation and putting something like this out there, they've got those same challenges that we have. So, what they were exactly trying to do was to avoid these horror stories that you hear of handing out devices and then discovering that the devices are still in the teacher's car, or that the teachers are just using it to put the same worksheets on that they did in paper pencils, so they were like, how can we focus on moving from the teacher to the device, rather than trying to push a device onto teachers? And so they came up with this idea that they, they call flipped pilots, and what they did is they went to their teaching staff and said, you give us, we've got technology money, you give us proposals as to what you want to do, a device that you want, what you think you're going to do with that device that changes the way you do teaching, that improves the opportunities for student learning, and we will buy those devices for you. And so the first year, they had nine proposals, and they gave out three hundred and fifty devices, and they were iPads, netbooks, Android Zooms. So that was in two thousand and ten, fast forward to two thousand and fourteen, they, and every year they had multiple proposals, in two thousand and fourteen, they had thirty-nine proposals, and they now have a total of nine thousand devices out in their district, so they did it over time, they didn't just say, we're gonna take a whole grade level, what they did was focus on those teachers, and, and initially, it might have been some individual teachers who came with those proposals, as time went on, what they were finding is that it was groups of teachers, it was grade levels, it was subject departments that were coming with proposals, which was making the learning and the use of the devices that much more robust. And so they now have about sixty percent of their students covered with these devices. They use something called the SAMR model, S A M R, when they're judging these pilots, and that means you can use this device to substitute what you're doing, so in other words, yeah, you can put the, the worksheet on there, or you can use it to augment what you're doing, well, you can write the, the essay, and maybe you can, you know, paste in some pictures, or you can modify the way that you're doing something, so now you can collaborate on an essay, or you can redefine how you're teaching, which gets to this whole, you know, getting back to the student right away, or, or maybe saying, well, now, you don't understand this concept, so you will take a little more time on this while someone else moves ahead, so, so they judge all their proposals that come to them by that, and they actually have a committee, they said, if you don't have an innovation committee in your district, you ought to have one. So I'm happy to hear that we have the FIT committee, which is really the equivalent of theirs, so, so we're on board with that. Then the, so the flipped pilot was one important part, the other part was the professional development. So what they did is, initially, you know, staff taught some professional development, and again, it was all aimed at the instruction part, it wasn't aimed at, here's how you use an Android, here's how you use a, an iPad or something like that, it was aimed at that, and, and then, what happened after they got some people who really knew what they were doing, as you were saying, that then the faculty took over instruction, and they said, that has been much more of a draw, because just like anything else, when your peers say it, somehow that made it more credible in the eyes of the teachers. And in addition, they formed a partnership with some local colleges, or college that allows this course to actually get credible, you know, transcript credit, so that is a big draw for the teachers then to take this, and so what's happening now is they're taking this professional development... And so what's happening now is, they're taking this professional development, and after taking it, then they're getting ideas for pilot proposals, and then they're coming and saying, oh, now I'd like a device in order to do this, that, or the other thing. So, the third thing that was really important is, they had their board president there talking. And I have to say, I was so impressed with his attitude and the attitude of the board, and I think it's a key component. They said, you know what, we took the position that we had to allow our staff to really push the envelope. And we had to be fully committed to failing really well in certain cases. Because if we, if there are some failures, it means that the professional staff isn't being allowed to try, try as much as they could. So, I mean, obviously, they're not talking about, you know, seven million dollars down the drain, but that a teacher could come and say, you know what, I thought this Android Zoom was going to be a good idea, but as a matter of fact, it's not moving out well, it won't do certain tasks, so forget the Android Zooms in the future. So what I really liked about it, and I'm going to give you, I had some copies, Mrs. Sander was nice enough to make some copies of parts of the presentation, so I'll give it to you so you can look at it more in depth afterwards. But what I really liked about it is that it ensured that the devices were in the hands of those who will use them, and that they weren't wedded to one device. You know, and we're hearing some of this, and that's the one thing that makes me a little uneasy, is, you know, like, all-in Chromebook, all-in iPad. I think, from what I've read and heard, that there can be some grade levels where different devices are more appropriate. And, you know, what they say, if all you've got is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And I think it's the same thing with technology, if all you have is one device, all of a sudden you're limited to that. You know, it gave them the ability to modify things over time. So it wasn't, you know, like, a million and a half dollars that one fell swoop necessarily, they could kind of gradually sneak up on it. The cons were, I did ask them, did they have any community input? And they said, no. They kind of looked a little bewildered about that. No, no. I do wonder what happens with overlapping devices. Nobody asked that question. You know, the social studies teacher wants a Chromebook, and the science teacher wants an iPad, does the student have two devices? I have no idea what they did logistically like that. And I also wonder about uneven student experiences. In other words, you do this approach, and, you know, if the student's lucky enough to have the pioneer who really knows how to use it, it's great. If they're unlucky enough to have the pioneer who doesn't know how to use it, it's bad. Or if they have somebody who goes, I like my paper and pencil, that's also bad. So I don't really know how that works. But I have to say, I was so excited about it, because it really seemed to me a different approach in really allowing those professionals who could use it to get it. And so anyway, I'll hand it out, and, you know, try to read it. It's actually interesting. This first was just a few slides from, a few slides from the PowerPoint. Is there not just one for every board member?
There's one for SLT and...
Okay. And then the second one is the actual memo that you can read that they sent out to their staff, that asked them to think about, well, what are you going to do with this device? And I think it's very instructive for us as well.
Their approach to this, I'll just make a quick comment. You know, what Rod explained tonight, the strategy with Google Apps, is exactly what's going on with Google Apps. You know, it's not a device strategy, but it's definitely an instructional approach. So, I mean, and again, every district has different solutions based on what's going to work for their organization. So thank you for sharing that.
Picking back on that, I also attended a presentation by Prince William County, Virginia Schools. And I'll send you a link to their PowerPoint. But they actually took a very different approach, very organized. And I'm trying to remember, they talked more about Google Apps, and how they, that Google Apps and cloud computing, I'm not sure, now that I think about it, how much was in there of one-on-one, but I'll have to, I'll have to look at that again. They were very, very successful throughout their whole district, but the key was, the state of Virginia supplies them with one instructional technology professional per building. So...
We'll take that.
You know, because I asked, well, what does this class, and what kind of support it? One, and that was just for instructional technology. That was not even the guy with the screwdriver, or a guy who might have to replace the battery. The only time they might share, and only had a halftime person, would be if they had a school with less than four hundred students, then they only got a halftime instructional technology person. So, everything that we want to do, if we want to do anything that is robust, I think will have to come with a pretty substantial revenue source. And I feel that District 214 has no issues with revenue either, because they are a high school only district, and typically their funding is, and they have a great base, and Elk Grove Village is, there's so much industry, and, you know, just in that one little town. So I think that's what makes our situation a little bit different, and I think, as a result, we may have to do a little more planning than, you know, unless we had somebody who would, who would, let's say, through a grant, through a foundation or something, say, I'll take on this teacher's pilot, and I'll buy the Chromebooks for her classroom, or whatever. I mean, so I think we have a lot of things to think about, and I'm really happy with the conversation we had tonight. I think we covered so much ground, and just the breadth of all these issues.
I agree that we've, this is very enlightening, and I think it's been very helpful in doing what it's supposed to accomplish tonight, and, you know, as a committee as a whole, it brought out all the conversations that we need to address, and, you know, put some timeframes on it, some cost numbers, and so on. So I was real pleased with the presentation, and the way we're proceeding in this area.
All right, is there any... Mr. Mack, it's, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, are there any other board reports? I do want to give you some reports on the conference, but I'll wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, by the end of this week, I'm going to be circulating an email to all members of the board, asking them for any suggestions they may have on resolutions. I'll come up with the three or four, identify the three or four suggestions that those are going to have identified in the, you know, as possible resolution in the email. But I'm going to ask you to get back to me, kind of a week after the emails, so that we can start working on this in a significant amount of time.
Any other board reports? Just, go ahead, Mr. Mack.
Yeah, I have one question, I don't know if this is going to be a resolution issue, but I think we saw in the Daily Herald a couple of weeks ago, the proposed eleven percent reduction in funding in Wheaton and Morgville District 200. And, you know, I, again, I sent Dr. Harris an email about it. Whatever it is, you know, this formula, we touched on it with the high school funding and so on, you know, there's got to be some better way. And, you know, I don't know how we want to communicate that, I don't, we have to understand it, I think, is a better thought. But I, you know, I'm, you know, for the state to kind of blankly tell us as a district who we are, and what our task is, and, you know, districts that apparently have some more dollars, whether it be high school otherwise, or are getting less reduction, I, it's just, it's, you know, we have to plan our lives. And, you know, if we're going to burden our community by more taxes, we have to understand why, and so on. So I think, if there's some resolution issue that can address that, I don't know, but, you know, it's really disappointing, and I hope we gained some insight between now and whenever on what the prediction is. I mean, we're at a tight budget already, and we're hearing about eleven percent reduction on thirty percent of our revenue. So it's just, it makes it very challenging.
And Jim, we talked about having a resolution on funding and assessments, and, I mean, funding for school districts. The only problem with that is that, as Partick pointed out, there are some school districts that are going to win, they're going to get more money as a result of that, and so, any resolution we come up with is going to be opposed by some other district who's getting it, you know, going to be winning on that. But we'll try, it's one of the things we're going to consider.
And unfortunately, as I shared with you, there's about four different proposals swirling out there right now, between Centerville 16, the Democratic solution for, you know, not continuing on with the income tax, and pretending, there's a range of things rolling, and the media tends to pick up on different things depending on what their information sources. So I encourage, I encourage the board to just listen at this point, and I'll certainly create as much as I possibly can, and I am confident that it's going to be, you know, a target for us to consider.
I just have one item to just alert board members, we will be beginning in May, starting the process of Dr. Harris's performance evaluation, so we'll get that going, but expect to get some additional sessions, you know, around that topic, so.
Another recent topic.
Another recent topic, yeah. So anyway, I had, yeah, yeah. If there are no other board reports, is there anybody signed up for public events?
Search for them.
You ready, Matt? Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion to...
Sorry.
Will that Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second in mind, Mrs. Cappio, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? This evening is a... Thank you, everybody.